Good evening. I declare the 2016 Vernon Town Meeting back in order. Couple of announcements before we begin tonight. There is a reflective house number order from the Vernon Fire Department at the table. You should check out. A chance to get some reflective numbers on the side of your house for 911 purposes. In addition, State Senator Bill Doyle's annual town meeting day poll is over by the table. If you wish, please fill it out and that way the legislature can talk about Vernon for the rest of the session. The Vernon historians had a record-breaking food sale yesterday on Election Day. You all done yourself proud. Eight hundred six dollars and fifty cents. And now with the business at hand, we will move on to Article Six to elect a library trustee to fill the unexpired term of one year through March 2017. Do we have a motion? Ms. Lockever.
I move that we elect a library trustee, we elect Kathy Corb to be a library trustee to fill the unexpired term of one year through March 2017.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded that we elect Kathy Corb to fill an unexpired term of one year as a library trustee through March of 2017. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I endorse her because she has already been appointed and served sometime and that's why we need to officially elect her. The Select Board appointed her interim and she's done a great job and I hope she agrees. Do you agree, Kat?
Thank you.
Please use a microphone. Again, this is being recorded for later telecast by BCTV Channel 8, rattleboro.tv.org. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I've enjoyed being part of the library organization and I've done my best and I would like to continue.
She also volunteers on Tuesday morning, so, you know, she's a fantastic addition to our board.
Further discussion on the nomination. Seeing none, all those in favor of electing Kathy Corb as a library trustee to fill the unexpired term of one year through March 2017, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have passed Article Six. Article Seven, to elect a library trustee for the term of three years. Do I have a motion? Ms. Lockever.
I move that we elect Dawn Petrofsky to be a library trustee for the term of three years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, we elect Dawn Petrofsky as a library trustee for the term of three years. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, she has already been appointed, like Kathy and like so many of us, to the work, by the Select Board, to work on the library board and she's been another fantastic addition. And I'd like to introduce her, to have her stand.
You accept? Yes, I accept. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion on the motion. And we see none. Again, the motion that Dawn Petrofsky be elected as a library trustee for a term of three years. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You passed Article Number Seven. Article Eight, shall the voters authorize the proposed language to be added to the policy on the administration of the Vernon Capital Plan as outlined in the town report and so approved by the Select Board? By the way, the issue can be found in your codicil in page number six. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the proposed language to be added to the policy of the administration of the Vernon Capital Plan as outlined in the town report and as approved by the Select Board.
Moved and seconded that the voters authorize the proposed language to be added to the policy on the administration of the Vernon Capital Plan as outlined in the town report and approved by the Select Board. Mr. Unruh, do you wish to speak to your motion?
I'm going to give the floor to Tom Rappaport.
Mr. Rappaport, you have the floor as soon as you get a microphone. And it's coming around.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tom Rappaport. I'm a member of the Finance Committee.
And please hold your microphone a little closer.
Okay. Member of the Finance Committee and in fact, the newest member. The Article Eight is a request that the voters approve some additional language to the policy governing the operation of the Vernon Capital Plan. We think that the language that we're proposing is merely clarification to assist those using the Capital Plan rather than any material change to it. Could we have the next slide, please? Now, the proposed language is on page six of the codicil that was handed out, codicil to the town report. And the proposed new language is underlined. It's pretty self-explanatory. I wanted to point out the background, the reason that this matter is before you. So this past year, when the Finance Committee and the Select Board were going through the process of updating the Capital Plan, a number of questions arose and those principally had to do with whether or not certain capital expenditures involving multiple items, such as desktop computers and related software, may be aggregated into a single budget item in order to meet the $10,000 threshold. For items to be in the Capital Plan, they have to involve capital expenditures and also have to be of a value of $10,000 or more. Another question that arose during the process was whether or not certain expenditures related to capital assets of the town, such as building, maintenance, repairs, and renovations, should be treated as routinely budgeted expenses and not included in the Capital Plan. So the Select Board sought the advice of the town's attorneys on these questions and the advice that the attorneys provided included both general guidelines and also some specific examples. The members of the Finance Committee decided it would be helpful to the present and future Select Boards and Finance Committees and others involved in the process if a portion of the advice that was received was actually put into the written policy governing the operation of the Capital Plan. And so the Select Board asked that we submit some language, which we did. The Select Board approved it and the proposed language is now before the voters. I'd be happy to take any questions, although I may have to ask other members of the Finance Committee or the Select Board, but please go ahead.
Discussion on the Rappaport motion. And seeing none. Oh, excuse me, Ms. Barrier, I did not see you there. Thank you for raising your hand again.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because you may have already said this. When you said codicil, I went running out for a codicil because I didn't realize it was the same as in the town report. So just to clarify, what's in front of us here is the change from what's underlined in the town report?
Mr. Rappaport is interrogated if he wishes to be?
No, the underlined portion is the proposed new language and by and large, it is simply an addition to the existing language.
I see.
There were a few instances where words were changed or items were capitalized in order to be consistent throughout, but for the most part, this is just additional language by way of clarification.
And if I could follow up?
Please do.
So what this does is create a more seamless access to the Capital Plan as needed, it rolls over and so forth?
That's our intention, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or discussion on the motion? And we see none. The motion again to authorize the proposed language to be added on the policy on administration of the Vernon Capital Plan as outlined in the town report and as approved by the Select Board. All those in favor of passing Article Eight as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You passed Article Eight. Article Nine, shall the voters appropriate $177,675.56 from Emergency Capital Reserve Fund to fund the Capital Plan. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Unruh.
I move to appropriate $177,675.56 from the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund to fund the Capital Plan.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded to appropriate $177,675.56 from the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund to fund the Capital Plan. Mr. Unruh, do you wish to speak to your motion?
I don't. I wish that Linda Sterapinski does.
Mrs. Sterapinski, if you wish, you would be recognized.
There are five members, two are planned and if they were on one of the things that were there. There's myself as chair, Nancy Gasset, who did a fantastic job as clerk, Joyce Goodnow, Rita Mudd, and Tom Rappaport. And we met with each of the department heads and went over their budgets and queried them as to when they needed the item, if they still needed the item, and if they could push it back. And a lot of them, you'll notice, are, have been pushed back. This year, we only have three actual purchases. If you look at page eight in your codicil. You will notice that we will be purchasing in this year, 2016-17, if the budget is passed. Under Town Office, Maintenance Department, the lawn tractor for the snow and removal and as well as the lawn, it's used for that also. It clears all the sidewalks on the other side of the road so the kids can walk to school down that way as well as over here. We also have under the Town Office where we discussed that we needed to replace the computers because just like your home computers get out of date and they slow down and back up because everything is changed on a national level, we need to replace our computers. So we're asking for the $10,000 there. And we discussed having a record storage room, which would be built at the bottom of the stairs coming down from the offices in the old room that the kids used to be in for the preschool. And that would be the cheapest way to create extra storage because there's already two walls there. We just have to build another two walls and put in a door. So $10,000 is requested for that. And so it would be $41,900 that we would be actually spending this year. However, we would be requesting the $215,059, which is under totals, minus the money that was invested in the plan, which is the interest in the gains, and minus the excess funds and return funds from the sale of the police car and rescue truck. And we did have $10,000 called records restoration, but we don't need that money now because we're doing a different plan and we want to use that $10,000 to actually build the storage room to put the records in. Are there any questions?
That would be my cue to say if there are questions or comments, please raise your voter card. Please wait for the microphone. Mrs. Rasmussen.
Hi, Janet Rasmussen. I have a question on the library capital renovation, $7,000 this year, $7,000 next year. Could you please explain what that's for?
Yes. The library put in a request to remodel the library to make it better usage. They want to put the children's room that's in the front to the back and this way, there's an area that's set aside just for them. And as everybody comes into the library and the kids are working and people are working with the kids, they stop what they're doing, they look up. All the people my age go, "Oh, aren't those cute little kids?" And so forth. So they have requested a little less than $14,000 for that. And when we brought it to the Select Board, because it's over $10,000, it requires two years, so we had divided it into seven and seven.
Further questions or comments? The back of the room, Mr. Ball.
Mike Ball. The storage, quick question, storage at the bottom of the stairs, what type of records are going to be stored in there?
I'm not exactly sure which records, if they're from the Treasurer's Office or just the Town Clerk's Office, but it will be fireproof. They'll have to use fireproof materials and they've already had somebody in to determine what needed to be done.
Just for clarification, no records that are to be maintained can be stored below grade?
Right.
Per the Secretary of State?
Right. And that's why we can take out some of the things that are upstairs and move them downstairs so there's more room up there.
Further discussion on the article, I believe, to the back of the room. Yes?
Nancy Derbro. Since we have cut the Sheriff's Department down and we have a very large area where the Police Department was, we could make that smaller and use the Chief's office for your storage room and eliminate this cost.
We can't, Nancy, because it has to be fireproof. It has, it has, by law, it has to be fireproof. So we would have the expense to renovate whatever area that we took away from the Police Department, but they use the whole, the whole thing that was used as a Police Department, they use it all.
Further discussion, Article Nine, Mrs. Burington.
Nancy Burington. This just may be a point of contention, but I thought we were voting, or the article was on moving the emergency fund. And this sounds more like we're talking about what the budget is. Can you kind of talk about the emergency fund and how that fits into the voting for the budget?
We're not doing, we're not moving the emergency fund at all. What we're doing is every year, we have to present to the Select Board a Capital Plan and it's exactly that, it's a plan. It's not cut and stone. It's making plans for the future and setting money aside. But what we're looking to fund it with is not money that will have to be appropriated by taxes. If you look at page four in this book. I have to find my own. Here it is. There's an Emergency Capital Reserve Fund and that fund has a balance of $1,776,941.59. And it also has, if you read the description below, it says, "The capital replacements, repairs, or to help defray the cost of the annual appropriation of the Capital Plan, monies can be used out of that." And that's what the Select Board has decided they would like to fund the plan with this year.
Further discussion on the article, back of the room, I believe that's Ms. Jovan.
Faith Jovan. Oh, got to put my glasses on.
I'll put mine on too.
I would like to make an amendment that we reduce, I guess it would be the line item, by $14,000 for the library renovations. We're trying to cut money here and the library is fine the way it is. Yes, people do greet the kids when they come in, but...
If you've made a motion, we'll allow you to speak to the amendment afterwards.
Okay.
So please restate what your amendment would be.
I would like to make an amendment that we take out the $14,000 over the next two years for the library renovations.
Moved and seconded that the fourteen, and could you also put a, put that in writing for the clerk, please? Moved and seconded that the article be reduced by $14,000. And once you have a chance to write that for the clerk, we'll give you a second and then we'll allow you to speak to your motion. Reminder that all amendments need to be put in writing so we make sure we have the language And it's been moved and seconded, so you have the floor.
I just think that the library is, is fine the way it is. $14,000 is a lot of money for right now. When we're trying to cut costs, yes, I greet the kids when I go in, but that's something that we've always done and I think we can just find a different way.
Back of the room, Mrs. Boyce.
If I understand right, you're just, you're moving the children's section from the front of the library to the back of the library?
To the back of the library and make a total section.
Make sure you ask questions to the moderator, if you would, please.
Sorry, sir.
All right.
My understanding is that they're just moving one section to another section, so they're just swapping it. So what's the $14,000 cost?
Go ahead.
Brona would like to speak to that.
Ms. Lockever will, will get the floor. If someone could get her a microphone. Ian's coming up in back of you.
It's not, it's not just because to greet the children. It's also because the children can get noisy and boisterous, as children will do, and putting them in the back would make it quieter for those who are working on computers. It would enlarge the space for adults. It will also, the renovations, what, part of the cost is for brand-new bookshelves for the children, book bins for their books so that they're easier to view. And that's, we have tried to get a grant last year and that did not go through.
Further discussion on the Jovan amendment, Mrs. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am supporting Faith's amendment. The Capital Plan was set up years ago by people who were a lot wiser than me, who saw the future and said, "Someday Vermont Yankee's going to close." If we set up this Capital Plan now and we put money in it every year, when it comes time for major expenses like fire trucks, dump trucks, things that are very costly for the community, those can be saved periodically and bought at a, you know, at a time when they're needed, but without a major expense to the community. The Capital Plan was never intended for renovations or book bins or, those are, those are things that should be put on an article and raised under the library's budget, not under the Capital Plan. My concern is if we start using this Capital Plan for things like this, it's going to become a Christmas tree. And before we know it, the complete Capital Plan will be gone and we're going to need a dump truck or a fire truck and there's not going to be any money for it. So I urge you to support this amendment.
Further discussion on the Jovan amendment, Ms. Barrier.
Deb Barrier. I want to point out a couple of things. First of all, the, because the Capital Plan notations there go out three or four years, we're not even looking at pulling any money next year either. It would be the following year that we would be asking the town to do that. And a lot can change in a couple of years. Second of all, the amount, when you compare it to a dump truck or something like that, is really small. The Town Library, the building that houses the library, is paid for and taken care of by the town, not part of the library budget. So when we are just asking that we can streamline and that also involves community labor, volunteer labor, a great deal of it, to make the library more usable, the front area for seniors would become an area of, for meeting, for the author presentations, and for other activities that are potentially fundraising activities. So it would put us more in line with libraries that do those kinds of activities than the way it is now. So, and as far as the grant that Brona mentioned, we definitely would be going for that grant again. Am I right, Jean, on that? We'd be going for that grant again. So that's not just a lost cause. So I just really want you to urge to think about that, that this is all down the road and in the future.
Further discussion on the Jovan amendment, Mr. Gant, the back of the room. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Andrew Gant. I also support the Jovan amendment. I can't foresee how moving the children's room would cost $7,000 when we have plenty of able bodies in this town who can volunteer to help move it, help do repairs. And I would encourage the library, if we need funds for housekeeping renovations, we need to be looking into more fundraising, not pulling it from the town's funds.
Further discussion on the amendment, Chair would recognize Mr. Unruh.
I called a question.
Sir, a second? Moved and seconded, we cease debate on the amendment. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have ceased debate. Again, we are voting on an amendment to reduce the appropriation from the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund by $14,000. All those in favor of the amendment, please.
I have to clarify that it's actually $7,000?
Right. Oh, okay, you, you should wait till, you have a microphone.
I'm sorry, Tim.
Again, we would recognize Mrs. Turnley. Please state your clarification.
Thank you. And to clarify, the amount that we would be reducing is 7,000, not 14, because it's seven over two years. So we would only be reducing what we're asking for this year by $7,000.
Okay, we stand corrected.
Thank you.
And again, the proposed amendment as corrected would be to reduce the appropriation by $7,000. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes would have it. And the article has been amended. The article as amended is still up for debate in the middle of the room over here.
Before I speak, can I have clarification? Can I make another amendment on the total Capital Plan?
Another amendment, if you wish to make it, would be in order depending upon what it was.
Okay, I would like to make an amendment to reduce the Highway Department by $36,000.
That would be to reduce the appropriation by $36,000?
Yes.
For the purpose of dealing with the Highway Department issue?
Yes.
All right, do we hear a second?
Second.
And please get your amendment in writing over to the clerk's table, please. We'll wait a second while that amendment is being written out. Point of order in the back of the room, Mr. Ball. Grab a microphone.
Mike Ball. The amendment should have been made against a specific line item, not just, it should be identified in the amendment which line item she's talking about.
I believe it was.
No.
Could you clarify your, your proposed amendment as soon as we have it written out? Okay, what was your amendment again?
I would like to reduce each line item by $4,000.
Each line item?
For a total of $36,000.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Moved and seconded, and please, you're allowed to have the floor.
I just feel that we can delay some of these expenditures and move them out a couple more years.
Do we have further discussion? In the back of the room, I see numerous cards. Be patient with me. And if the BCTV person will get out of the way, I would say that that might be Ms. And if the BCTV person will get out of the way, I would say that that might be Ms. Freeman back there.
Hi, Jess Freeman. I think what I heard, the purpose of this capital plan fund is for those big expenses that those Highway Department things are doing. So this year we pay a little bit, and next year we pay a little bit, and we've been paying a little bit, so that when our dump trucks are too old to be used and do need to be replaced, that money is already there. And so you can't just continue to say, we'll pay it someday, we'll pay it someday, we'll pay it someday, and then that someday's there, and we're on the hook for a full price of a dump truck in one year.
Further discussion on the amendment over in the corner.
Mary Lynn Sherlin. Having previously been on the Finance Committee and worked on this, I can tell you David's very conscientious about this. And if you look at the years of some of his equipment, example, he has a pickup truck that's 1998. If you talk about pushing out something and taking care of it, there's a prime example. That truck comes up for replacement, and he goes, no, don't need it, push it out. So there's more other examples in there for that. So I don't see a need of reducing his budget in this.
Further discussion on the amendment. Very hard to see you when you're back that way. Please, please continue.
Jeff Dunkley.
Yeah, you're on.
Okay. I think this is a good discussion. I'd like to make one observation. There are six large vehicles in this town, split between the Fire Department and the Highway Department. We have $1.6 to $1.7 million tied up in six vehicles. I think we do need an honest and frank discussion about some of these larger-ticket items and not the $10,000 items. Thanks.
Further discussion on the amendment, back of the room, Mr. Pond.
George Pond. I would like to know if David, if you would give us a shot in the dark about the conditions of the vehicles that we're talking about reducing the money for. Would you speak on this article, please?
Mr. Walker is interrogated.
Okay, as Marilyn said, we have a '98 Chevy pickup. I can't remember the miles on it. We've oiled it, then last year we put two front fenders on it. We're still keeping it going. The money's there. When it dies, we'll replace it. We got a 2003 F-550 we're doing the same thing with. We've moved out a dump truck, we backed it up another year. We're trying to push them out as far as we can run them. That's what we're trying to do, as long as the money's there, so we can replace them.
Further discussion on the amendment, Mr. Ball.
Mike Ball. I was on the Financial Advisory Committee a long time ago, and I was, basically took it over when the capital plan was fairly new. One of the things that you have to remember is, when we raise money now and not later, now is always cheaper than later. And the fact is, if you put the money aside and appropriate it, I would rather be raising it right now. But because when you take a look, and they were saying about how we're going to push it off till later, right now the money is cheaper. We need to put it aside now and not later, because later, when all the rest of the school hits us, our tax rates are going to go way up, and all of this money we're talking about right now is going to hurt a lot more in the pocketbook. So I would basically strongly recommend that everybody defeat this amendment. Thank you.
Further discussion in the middle of the room.
I don't know much about dump trucks and so on and so forth, but I do know that I drive a 2003 car, and it's still running and in great condition. I don't think $4,000 per vehicle is a great deal of money to take away from each vehicle. It really doesn't amount to much in the end result for each vehicle.
Further discussion, Mrs. Terapinski.
Part of the purpose of having a Finance Committee is for us to go and speak with the department heads, which we do. And we went over each of these line items and asked about their maintenance records and how they maintain their vehicles. And what's been said is true. David takes excellent care of them, as well as Fred and Stanley. They're not used harshly. They're properly maintained by having all the greasing and lubrication and all that done when it's supposed to be done. And the money that we're asking for is just what we need at this time, and nothing will be bought unless it has reached the end of useful life. That's the purpose of this plan, is to set money aside a little at a time, and when it comes to purchase, we make sure the Finance Committee works with the department head. We make sure that it is the end of useful life, and then at that time, it goes to the Select Board, who has the final say. So it's not something that they're just going to run out and do. So the money's very carefully watched, it's our money, too. So I would recommend defeating this amendment.
Further discussion on the amendment, Mrs. Rasmussen.
Janet Rasmussen, I'd just like to add to something that Mike Ball just mentioned. I think when we spoke on Monday night as part of the Tax Committee, Patty O'Donnell explained that what we do know is that our taxes from Vermont Yankee are going to go up over the next five years. So money is cheaper this year than it will be in two years, three years, four years. And at some point, these items are going to have to be replaced, and to replace them with cheaper money now than way more expensive money later when the truck breaks down and we can't afford to replace it, seems like a folly to me.
Further discussion on the amendment, Ms. Gardner.
I just have a question, like on the pickup truck, the three-quarter ton, there's already a balance of $35,000. How much more money do you need? If you funded another 65 and 65, you're looking at a $48,000 pickup truck? That seems pretty extreme.
Well, you need to go to a dealership.
The Finance Committee is interrogated.
Right. These, when this pickup truck was originally going to be replaced was several years before this, and the cost at that time was around $35,000. And the estimated cost to replace it, not this year, but if something happened to it next year, is around that. Now, that doesn't mean that they're going to run out and buy a pickup truck for $48,000. Just like you and me, it would be shopped around, they would have to get bids on it and try to get, and it won't be an upgraded, it will be a like. And that's the other thing. We're not going to buy Cadillacs when Toyotas will do. So any questions on that?
Further discussion on the amendment. Lots of cards up, we'll go into the back corner next.
Karen Gilbert, call the question.
Sir, second. Moved and seconded that we cease debate, all those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You've ceased debate on the question. Again, the proposed amendment would be to reduce the bottom line on this article by a total of $36,000. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it, the nays would have it, and the amendment has been defeated. Back to the article number nine, as originally amended by the amendment approved earlier, we go to further discussion. Mr. Ball.
I know everybody's going to groan on this. I wish to amend. I move that we change the wording, and the attorney should probably check me on this, change the wording from appropriate to raise and appropriate. And I'd speak to the motion afterward, the amendment afterwards.
We also will need this in writing. However, we will ask the town attorney to make his money and rule on the proposed amendment.
Mr. Moderator, it's my understanding that the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund already has a balance, a substantial balance, and what the intent of this motion is, is to move money from the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund to fund the capital plan. So you're moving funds from one fund to the capital fund, but you're not raising money by taxation. So I, I'm not entirely clear on what Mr. Ball is suggesting, but I don't think you have to raise any money by taxation. You're just, you're moving it. Yeah. So I'm not, I'm not clear on the question.
So I, based upon the attorney's ruling, I'm going to rule the amendment out of order. Well, well.
The reason I said is that somebody should second, then I talked to it, then he can make his decision. He doesn't know what I'm talking about, and he said, I don't know.
Well, then on that basis, I will allow the amendment to stand if we have a second. Moved and seconded, Mr. Ball, please explain yourself.
Okay, the issue comes in is that we need to basically, to put money in the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund. By appropriating the money by the current motion, not the amendment, but the current motion, all we're doing is that we're allocating money from that to go into capital plan. But what just, and Janet was talking about just a minute ago, mutual appreciation night, what she was talking about just a few minutes ago was simply as in the fact is that, and Patty said the other night, if we just appropriate, we're going to have to raise more money to put it back into capital reserve, Emergency Capital Reserve Fund next year. If we do it tonight, we have $160,000 more dollars coming from Vermont Yankee. It's better right now to raise and appropriate the money tonight than it is to raise and appropriate money next year. So it's cheaper for us to do it this year than next year.
Mr. Slayson, could you please give us some guidance? And wait for the microphone.
It may well be good judgment to raise and appropriate the amount of money that the speaker has recommended, but that's not the nature of the article, at least in my judgment. To be germane, the article is really asking the voters to reallocate funds from one, from the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund to the capital fund. That's the motion in front of the voters. There is no article in front of the voters asking them to raise additional monies for the Emergency Capital Fund, which is what you'd like to do as your amendment. I do not believe it's germane to the amendment or to the article as worded, because the voters who rely upon the articles as worded, who aren't here tonight, are not forewarned or notified that taxes could be raised to increase the Emergency Capital Fund, so it would not be fair to those folks. So what they're aware of tonight is that we're going to discuss an allocation of funds, but not an additional taxation.
Thank you, Mr. Slayson. On that basis, I will maintain that the amendment would not be germane. Further discussion on the article as already amended over in the middle of the room.
I think I'd like some clarification. What is the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund usually used for? Why do we have it?
The board and/or the Finance Committee would be interrogated if they so choose. Mrs. Terapinski. In fact, we have someone over here who'd like to speak. The Finance Committee is interrogated.
I don't know exactly when this fund was set up, because I only moved here in 1994. But the fund has been in here for as long as I can remember. It says it was set up in 2000. I don't know if they had anything like that before. And I understand what Mike is saying, but I don't know what legalese is, so we have to go with what the lawyer is saying. And the money was put in there every year to have it in case there was an emergency that came up, that something needed, say like a major piece of equipment, or a roof collapsed, or whatever, that there would be money in that fund to go to that fund. And that's what it was for. But if you look at it and read it, the description, it was set up for the purposes of providing perpetual funds for unanticipated and emergency capital replacements or repairs, and to help defray the cost of the annual appropriation of the capital plan. And you did that in part last year. You took some money from there to help fund the capital plan. And the Select Board is asking this year to take the money from that rather than to raise the money by taxes. That's, that's what that is.
You may have one follow-up question.
I haven't been able to find the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund, so could you just tell me how much, how much money is in the fund currently? Can you tell me? So a roof?
We need to have microphones for both of you. Again, to repeat, we are being recorded for telecast by BCTV.
The balance as of June 30th, 2015, is $1,776,941.59. That's what's in there right now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, over on the far side of the room, then we'll work our way back.
I'd like to query the board. I understand the language of the Emergency Reserve Fund, but I would like to query the board as to why they chose to take the money out of there and the whole amount. We keep depleting our reserve funds and depleting them. Doesn't make sense, especially now.
The Select Board would be queried if it so chose. Mrs. Howell.
Yes, we were only doing it for the taxpayers, to save the taxpayers' money.
A little louder, please? Just, just really?
The microphone is on.
Yeah, just really, really get in there.
I have a loud mouth. I don't know why you don't hear me, but we only chose to do it this ways, to save you, the taxpayer, and so instead of raising the money and giving you a bigger tax rate, we decided to go this way. That's all, that's all, the only reason.
All right, the Chair would recognize Treasurer Turnley.
Cindy Turnley, just to clarify, Mrs. Frost asked how much was in the fund currently. As of this date, there's $1,781,977.3 as of February 29th.
All right, Chair would recognize Mr. Langaville.
You know, I think that this, moving this money this year from the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund, instead of raising it as taxes and increasing our taxes, is fine. It's about one-tenth of the amount that's in the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund. But I would like to point out that really, we have a, we have two capital funds. We have a capital fund, which we're moving this money into, and then we have an Emergency Capital Reserve Fund, which we're moving it out of. The capital fund is very well-constructed, very well-funded. You know, you can talk about collapsing roofs, but there's really very few things that you can imagine that this Emergency Capital Reserve Fund would ever be used for. It hasn't been used for any large, unanticipated things since it was funded. It is essentially a savings account of the town. And if you look through the funds in this supplemental report, there are several other very large balances, like in the Town Forest Fund, that, you know, how many expenses can we take out? we take out of the town forest funds for cutting trails or something? This town, in contrast to almost any other town in the state of Vermont, has a very large set of savings accounts. Now, we can eat our seed corn, you know? We can take bits and pieces out of it for things like this that we really should be paying for out of taxes. But in the end, if we don't, if we, if we don't become smart about this and really develop a strategic plan for using or maintaining these funds to our best advantage, then we're just gonna fritter them away, one year at a time, saying, "Oh, let's pay for this out of this capital fund and that out of that capital fund." Um, you know, so again, I'm fine with this, moving this money this time for this purpose. But I think that going forward, we really need to develop a smart plan for using the more than $2 million of various savings accounts that this town has. Thank you.
Further discussion on the article. Wait in this side of the room.
Randy Bro. From what I understand, according to what Linda just read, this fund, emergency fund, is for unexpected expenses or repairs, and the things that we are looking to move this money for are for anticipated expenses and repairs. So I don't think that it really qualifies to move it, for as much as I think that, you know, they need these monies, I'm just not sure that this is the right way to go about it because of the purpose of the emergency fund.
Further discussion on the motion, back corner here. That's, uh, Mrs. Harris. Please turn on your microphone.
Sorry. I think one thing, when we decided to move it, we did not know that we were gonna have as good a deal as we do with Vermont Yankee. It was looking really, really bad. And that's why we chose to do it this way this year. I doubt if we would do it again next year, because we now have something to base it on. But when we, when we did this, our taxes were gonna be really a lot worse than they are now.
Further discussion on Article 9. Mrs. Vergobe.
I have a question that's, um, probably gonna be geared more towards the attorney. If we end up defeating this article, as Mr. Ball just pointed out, if we can't change the language to raise in terms of taxes, if we defeat this article as it's written or as it's been amended, are we a, do we have an option to be able to fund the capital plan at all?
Mr. Slayson, you are interrogated, sir. Uh, please, again, microphone?
No.
I heard that one. Further discussion on Article number nine. Seeing none, I want to ask the treasurer for clarification on what the as amended bottom line would be.
Okay. The new figure is 170,675.56.
Thank you. Again, the motion is to appropriate 170,675 dollars and 56 cents from the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund to fund the capital plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article number nine as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article 9. Article 10. Shall the voters appropriate $41,000 to be expended for items approved for purchase in the capital plan? And the explanation can be found in pages five through nine of your codicil. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Unruh.
I move to appropriate 41,900 dollars to be expended for items approved for purchase in the capital plan. And, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to this article.
We will get the, the motion on the floor if it is seconded. Moved and seconded, Mr. Unruh, you have the floor for purposes of making an amendment.
I'm gonna ask Cindy to, uh, make that amendment with the numbers.
Yes, please speak up. We wanna make sure everybody in the room can hear you.
I'm asking the town treasurer to, uh, make the amendment, 'cause she has the figures.
Thank you, Cindy.
Mrs. Turnley.
Cindy Turnley. Um, the new figure would be 208,059. That's 208,059.
So that amendment would be then to change the bottom line in Article 10 to appropriate 208,059 dollars to be expended for items approved for purchase in the capital plan. Is that correct? Is there a second on the amendment? Moved and seconded, that we move to appropriate 400, excuse me, 208,059 dollars to be expended for items approved for purchase in the capital plan. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, Cindy would like to, I'm sure.
Mrs. Turnley, please go ahead.
The way the, um, original writing was, they were only funding 41,900, which is the cost of the items they're planning to purchase in the next fiscal year. It did not include the figures for future purchases. So that's why we had to change it to the 208,059.
Further discussion on the amendment. In the middle of the room on this side.
Okay. I'm a little bit lost. Um, I'll put it in my own words, and you can tell me if I'm right. The figure of, uh, in Article 10 that reads 41,900 is incorrect. Is that right?
Mrs. Turnley is interrogated.
That is correct.
So you want to change it to 208,059?
59.
59.
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
If, if we don't do that, then we'll only be funding for the items they're going to purchase next year. We will not be funding any items going forward into years to come for this year.
So it's just like an error in?
Yes, that's correct.
In the book?
Correct.
So you're trying to correct the error?
Correct.
By this amendment that you?
Yes.
Want to make?
Thank you.
Uh, in fact, Mr. Unruh, we'll recognize you.
Just so everybody understands what's going on, 'cause I know it's a little confusing. Uh, we moved to appropriate 170,000 dollars, extensive change.
Speak up, please.
Yep. We just moved to appropriate 170,000 dollars and some change. We just did that. That's all done. The, where the 208 comes in, there's a difference of 41,900, which was what the original article was. That money is already within the capital plan from our sale of our police cruisers and a few other items that we sold. So that money is already there. That's the difference. That's the 41,900. So instead of that money being there, it, we, it's just moved over.
Further discussion on the article. Uh, Mrs. Turnley, are you trying to clarify?
I'm trying to clarify, yes. The difference between, the 41,000 consists of, um, $5,000 for the town office tractor, lawn and snow blower, $10,000 for the computer replacement, and $10,000 for the record storage room. That's the amount that they, that's going to be spent in the next fiscal year out of what we're asking for. If we only did that amount, everything else, you know, for highway, fire department, and anything else that was asked to be funded, would not be funded. The total amount, if you look at the bottom of call, of the column for FY 2016, 2017, with the 7,000 taken out for, um, the library, it changes that total to 208,059 dollars. Minus the interest in gains and minus the, uh, funds for the sale of the police cruiser, means that we've already said we're going to appropriate 170,675.56. So all we're doing is clarifying the amount that we're asking to appropriate. Does that make sense?
Further discussion on the amendment, Mrs. Barrier.
Yeah, that's what I saw you doing. And what I don't understand is how this is a completely separate article. What you did is you chopped the library from the emergency fund, but now you're saying you just automatically are chopping it from the existing capital fund without, uh, any discussion on it. And I think that needs to be pointed out. Sally, you're shaking your head.
The treasurer is interrogated.
There would be no funding for that. They've already told you what they wanna fund out of the emergency capital in the previous article. So even if you approved it, that we would have no way of raising the money.
So what's sitting here on the page isn't really here.
Well, they just, in the last article, they made those changes already. They took the seven.
I thought the last article was just transferring the money.
Yeah, but you only transferred out.
That this already was in the capital plan. The 7,000 was already in the capital plan, had been approved by the select board.
They, they already removed it in the last article, so when they changed the amount they're asking to appropriate, if you leave it in, there's not gonna be any money to fund it, because it's already been removed from the amount we're funding.
Okay. I think you guys need to think long and hard about the little things like that.
Further discussion on the amendment. Back of the room, Mrs. Freeman.
Hi. I think there's a lot of confusion, so I wanna say what I heard and clarify if that's correct. What I heard is in the last article, what we agreed to is we're gonna take money from this account, our emergency reserve fund, and put it into our capital plan. And that this new article is to say these line items are for those things, and that's how we're allocating them forever. So the first one, 12,500 dollars to go for the town van when we need to replace it, what we're voting on right now is that those 12,500 dollars are for that van and cannot be said later, "Well, it's in the capital plan, but we never said it's for that van," and change it to something else. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment to Article number 10. Again, if there is no further discussion, the amendment would read as follows. The, uh, article would be changed to move to appropriate 208,059 dollars to be expended for items approved for purchase in the capital plan. If you are, Mr. Ball.
I'm sorry, but what's supposed to, but based on a long line of years of basically dealing with this issue, you first, you have to approve the capital plan as presented. And what we ended up doing, we didn't ever approve the capital plan as presented. What we did was, we ended up taking out 7,000 dollars for the library, but nowhere did we say that we agree, the town has agreed with the expenditure here. In reality, the capital plan already has the, the interest, the return of the, on the investment, uh, from the cruisers, and we asked for the 170,000 dollars after taking the 7,000 dollars out. This motion is really wrong. It should've been about best approving the capital plan. We already have the money now. It's been appropriated from the Emergency Capital Reserve over into the capital plan. You don't need any more money. You just have to approve what's in here.
The chair would recognize Board Chair Howell.
Yes. I'm sorry, it does read quite strange this year. Um, and it was vetted through the attorneys and, and, um, the LCT. And, uh, both came out, came back exactly the same. What was trying to be done was, the 177,000, which was in the original amount in Article 9, was before, uh, was the amount after we removed 178 dollars, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, 783,44, which was interest in gains, and, and before we returned the funds, which are excess funds, which came from the sale of the police cars and rescue truck, which was, um, and from the restoration of the, um, records, which came to 36,600 dollars. Removed from the original amount of 215,000 was 177. We took the 7,000 away, or you, the people took the 7,000 away, which made it 170,675.56. And that was the amount we were appropriating. We were moving from capital reserve fund to the capital plan fund. Now, what we had to come back with was to ask you if we can expend that money. Um, the 208,000 is the money that we need to expend. It's, it's the hundred, I mean, it's the 41,900 dollars plus all this money, like, um, Ms. Freeman said, the 12,500, 6,500, all this money, so that it is stuck there and nobody can touch it. It's there. And, um, um, so you have to, you have to expend it. Am I correct, Cindy? Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment to Article 10. Ms. Lockenberger.
So where is the 41,900 dollars coming from? Are we paying, are we raising that by taxes, or is it coming from the emergency?
The, the board, please, again, use your microphone.
I'm trying. Not working. Um, yes, 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 yes. It is still coming from, it's coming from the emergency capital plan. It's not coming from your taxes, no. Did I say that right this time?
All right. Further discussion on the amendment to Article number 10. In the back of the room, Ms. Jovan.
Call the vote, please. Question?
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, we cease debate. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have ceased debate. Again, the amendment is changing the number in Article 10 to make it read, "To appropriate 208,059 dollars to be expended for items approved for purchase in the capital plan." All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've amended Article 10. We now go to the article as amended. Further discussion on the article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm getting confused now. Okay, so you go back to Article, Article 9, okay? So then we were, we were approving appropriating the money from, from the capital, Emergency Capital Reserve Plan to the capital plan. So that was only approving, moving the money. And then we approved the difference that didn't get taken up the first time. But we've never approved the capital plan, which I think is what Mike was trying to say. There's no article in here to actually approve the capital plan.
The board or other parties as appropriate are queried. Mrs. Howell.
I, I believe the, um, the attorney should answer that, because we did have that in there, and, um, I can't remember how it read, but it was, and the, and the people could, um, take and delete and add, and all that stuff was there, um, except for, um, I believe that we were, sorry. We were told that we didn't need that any longer.
The town attorney is queried, if he so chooses to be.
Well, let's see if we can help out here. Article 10, I don't recall any changes to Article 10 as submitted, but let me see if I can, um, uh, help clarify. If you go to the capital plan, I'm looking at page eight of my codicil, and the grand total to be appropriated at the bottom of the 2016-17 column was 177,675.56. What I had understood had happened previously, uh, is we, is there was a reduction of 7,000 dollars in that column. So the amount to have been appropriated would be that figure reduced by 7,000 dollars, which would've been 176,7556, which if approved in this article as, as appropriated, would've bought the town of Vernon each of the items listed in that column, with the exception of the library renovation. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes, no?
Mrs. O, Mrs. O- Mrs. O'Donnell will allow you a follow-up.
That's not what I'm questioning. When you go to page 45 from this, on Article 18 last year on the capital plan, Janet made the motion to approve the Vernon capital plan as presented in the annual report. We don't have that language in any of these articles. We're approving the crossover of money from the emergency fund to the capital plan. We're approving the extra couple dol-, well, I guess it's a lot more than a couple dollars, but the extra money in the next article. But there's no article that actually approves the Vernon capital plan as presented.
I think that's, that's absolutely true. Now, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and we concurred, advised the select board that, the select board has absolute authority over the capital plan. In other words, most towns do not submit the question of a capital plan to the voters. It's vested in the select board. The select board decided to submit it to the voters, as has been done, the historical practice here in Vernon. And the select board can decide whether or not to return the, the old language, or do as many towns do, and it wouldn't even be on the floor tonight. It would be, it would be a straight-up expenditure in your budget. You wouldn't be addressing it as a capital plan, per se. So I think that what your select board did is, there's a bit of a compromise. If you appropriate the 208,000, or whatever number you come up with, to be expended for those items, you are, in essence, approving the capital plan for 2016-17 in that column. That's what you're doing indirectly by, by approving that expenditure. Rather than a separate article saying, well, do we approve the plan, and then do we expend the monies to buy it? That was a two-part process BLCT said was unnecessary. What you're doing is if you allocate that $208,000, you're approving the expenditure in that column. You're approving the plan.
Further discussion on the article as amended. Mr. Ball.
I agree with what the town attorney said, but this article that we're addressing right now is, it's moot. We shouldn't even be talking about it. And I encourage everybody to vote it down. We've already approved the expenditure. We don't have to approve the $41,900.
Further discussion on the article as amended. Mrs. Lockever.
I've said it before, I'm not a mathematician, but I've just done this math several times, and so has Dawn. $170,675.56 plus $41,900 comes to 2112,575.56, not 208.
The town treasurer is interrogated.
No, the 41,000, you don't add the 41,000 to anything. The 41,000 is part of the $208,000. All we're doing is giving the total amount of money that we wanted to appropriate, instead of just the amount that was going to be expended next year. It's part of the
Mrs. Harris.
Is this on now?
Yes.
A lot of this confusion is because of the wording. We have a capital reserve fund, and we, an emergency capital fund, and we have a capital fund. The outside auditor has suggested that we rename the capital, the emergency capital fund to a rainy day fund, just so we don't have this. We, if we take it from one fund in order to put it into another fund, the first fund, in order to spend it from the first fund, we've got to approve expending it from the first fund. Does that make sense?
Further discussion on the article as amended. Back of the room, Mr. Gant. Well, actually, before that, why don't we hear from the town attorney before we do that?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. I'd like to make just one more attempt to clarify where I think we are. Again, in the Article, Article 9, the town of voters allocated funds from the rainy day fund, or the emergency capital reserve fund, to the capital plan. You now need, with all due respect to the, to the speaker in the back, it's, it's my judgment, you now need to appropriate the funds to approve the purchase in the capital plan. That will not be done without an affirmative action by this board. You haven't purchased the items in that column yet. You funded it. You funded the capital plan, but you have not appropriated, you haven't approved the purchase of those articles from the capital plan until you take an affirmative action.
Further discussion. Back of the room, Mr. Gant.
Andrew Gant. I also am not a mathematician, and so I'm not going to pretend like I'm able to follow it. So for us dumb guys in the back, I keep hearing the 41,900, and it was asked earlier where that number came from, and it wasn't answered. So if you could break it down of what items it came from, that would be great.
The town treasurer is queried.
Okay. The 41,000 consists of the purchase of the town office tractor, lawn and snowblower. If you noticed, it, the balance as of 6:30-15 in the first column is 16,9 plus the 5,000 we're asking for. And then if you go to town office computer replacement, there's the 10,000 we're asking for. And under record storage room, there's another 10,000. If you add all of those together, the 16,9, the 5, and the 210s, you get $41,900. That's how much they're planning to use to spend this coming fiscal year.
Further discussion on the article as amended. Mr. Langavell.
Right. And I think that that, you know, that we're using the word appropriate here. We're having our attorney using the word appropriate. But we're not appropriating 208,000 and something to be spent this year. We, we've already said, Ms. Starpinsky said, we're spending this 41,900. That's all we're spending out of this, this year. So the, the only function of the 208,000 is basically, it's the additional amount that we are adding into the capital plan in order to account for everything in that column, that, you know, the, the town van, the pickup truck, and so forth, which we're, we're sort of tacking on savings amounts for, you know, years to come. Some of this is not going to be spent until 2028. Okay? So the function of this 208,000 really is to approve the capital plan as presented. So, thank you.
Further discussion on the article as amended. Plenty of hands up. We're going to recognize people who have not spoken once on the article. Gentlemen, I believe that's Mr. Dunkley. Called for the question. Moved and seconded, we cease debate on the article. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You've ceased debate. Again, the article as amended reads, "To appropriate $208,059 to be expended for items approved for purchase in the capital plan." All those in favor of approving Article 10 as amended, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You have passed Article 10. Article 11, shall the voters appropriate $100,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the town road upgrading fund, which you can find in your codicil on page four. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Unruh.
I move to appropriate $100,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the town road upgrade fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town appropriate $100,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the town road upgrading fund. Mr. Unruh, do you wish to speak to your motion?
No.
Questions on-
I'm just trying to be honest. If David wants to speak to it, come on up, David.
Mr. Walker has the floor.
Okay. Hopefully, I can make this one simple. This money will be used for repaving a mile and a half of Pond Road, which will be roughly from Houghton Hill to Vernon Village. We have, I believe it's 91,000 that will be left over that's in the town road upgrade. With this will give us 191. I've had some money come in from the state. So, because we figured it was going to be 218, 250 for the paving. And I've also applied for a grant, which I got last year, which we will be refunded, 174,000 for paving.
Further discussion on Article 11. Ms. Barrier.
Deb Barrier. So I'd like to query Commissioner Walker on this. Just to clarify, you have a grant of 174 whatever K coming in against the 200,000 cost?
We will have the grant after we pay the 218. They will reimburse us 174.
Okay, so our bottom line is more in the K, in like 45,000 we're, you're asking for.
Correct.
And I also just want to make a comment that I think that the road between Houghton Hill and out there is still perfectly fine. But also, I mean, we're already paying in your regular fund for asphalt, and we're paying for your equipment, and we're paying for gravel. None of that counts?
That and the regular fund is only $1,500, I think, for asphalt. So if we need it in the wintertime, it's not for the summer paving projects.
Further discussion on Article 11. And right in the middle of the room.
I'm completely lost because I have my book that I ripped my page out of. So I don't have the supplement, and I'm not sure what page we're on that I should be looking at.
Again, this would be page four of the codicil. I'd be glad to deliver you one in person.
Page 48.
Page 48 of the initial town report.
Thank you.
Further discussion on Article 11. Back of the room, Mr. Pond.
So as I under, George Pond, as I understand it, then they want to add, we have 391,000 there now, and they want to add another 100,000. We're going to use 200,000, and we're going to get 172 back. Is that right?
Mr. Walker is queried.
You've got to remember, 300,000 of that is for the box culvert for Central Park that's going to be put in that didn't get in last summer. It's there, but it's already used because we haven't got it in there.
Further discussion on the article. Going once, going twice. Back of the room, Mr. Gant.
Andrew Gant. Just wanted to comment on it. I work for land construction. Asphalt isn't cheap. And we need to be doing everything we can at the moment to keep our town up kept and nice. So I absolutely agree that we need to appropriate the money for this.
Further discussion on Article Number 11. And seeing none, again, the article reads, "The motion would be to appropriate $100,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the town road upgrading fund." All those in favor of the article as read, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You've passed Article 11. Article 12, shall the voters appropriate $50,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the professional services fund, which you shall find in page two of your codicil. Is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Unruh.
I move to appropriate $50,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the professional services fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we appropriate $50,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the professional services fund. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Absolutely.
Then please, by all means, go ahead.
The professional services fund is to pay for our lawyers when we are in negotiations with different people, such as Velco, et cetera, and for general purposes of the town. It's to pay for our lawyers.
Further discussion on Article 12. Ms. Barrier.
Deb Barrier. Yeah, I wanted to query the board, or query Josh on this. And that was, what was our expenditure, what was our outlook last year? Do we, in terms of the 50K?
The board is queried.
Cindy, can you provide that, please?
Chair would recognize Treasurer Turnley, once she receives a microphone.
Cindy Turnley, you're asking what was expended last year? Yes. Okay, the total expenses you'll find in your codicil on page two. And the total expenses were 25,644 out of that fund as of June 30, 2015.
Further discussion on Article Number 12. Any further discussion? Ms. Lockever.
How much is in that fund right now?
The treasurer is queried.
As of February 29, the total amount in that fund is 174,037.28.
Further discussion on the article. In the middle of the room, please pass the microphone down to her.
Sorry, I got, sorry, I got distracted looking for the page I was supposed to be on. I may have missed, somebody may have asked this. How much did we spend out of this fund last year? Or 25,000? And there's currently how much in there? 174? I don't see a need to put another 50,000 in this fund.
Further discussion on the article. Back of the room, Ms. Jovan.
I would like to make an amendment, if possible, to just raise and appropriate $25,000 because that's basically what was spent last year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the bottom line on the article read, "25,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the professional services fund." Do you wish to speak further to your motion?
Well, I wasn't sure if I had to go and write it down.
I would like you to write it down.
Okay. That's why I was headed over there.
All right. I, I do appreciate that.
If we only spent 25, what, 644 last year, maybe next year we won't spend as much. Maybe we'll spend a little bit more. But there's a good nest egg in there, so I don't think we need to raise and appropriate $50,000.
Further discussion on the amendment. Mrs. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As, as we're all aware of, there's a lot of transition in this town. And I started a meeting this year talking about our negotiations with Entergy. Well, as smart as I would like to think I am, believe me, I didn't get all the research on my own. We hired a utility specialist attorney to help us. We have hired, we've had Skip Sansucci help us on the assessment part of it. The most important thing your select board can do, and your tax committee can do at this point, is make sure that we are getting the best help we can to give us the best information we can to get the best deals we can for this town. And if it takes us 50,000 to get a contract for 750,000, that is money well spent. But if we don't do this right, we are in big trouble forever.
Further discussion-
I ask you not to support the amendment.
Further discussion on the amendment. Treasurer Turnley.
Cindy Turnley. I was asked how much was spent last year, which was the 25,000. But this year so far, this fiscal year we're in now, we've spent 27,000 more. So we've spent a little bit more than we did all of last year, and we've still got a few months left to go. And we haven't gotten all the bills yet from the negotiations.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment over in the corner here.
Brandybro. If we spent, well, almost 30,000 so far this year, but we have 170-something in there already. I think we're more than well-covered, so we don't have to put anything in at all this year. this year.
Further discussion. Mr. Unruh.
Just to clarify what Cindy just said, we spent 27,000 this year. Our fiscal year didn't end in December. We got three months left in our fiscal year, and as Cindy said, bills haven't stopped coming in from our negotiations with Entergy and all the other things that have been going on. So we don't have a clear depiction of what we're going to spend this year. It could end up being 40,000. I'm not sure how much, you know, has been used thus far. As it's been made, you know, clear by several different people, Mr. Ball and Mrs. O'Donnell, now is the time to raise the money that we're going to need for the future while we still have a very small cushion, but a cushion.
Further discussion on the amendment proposal. Back of the room, Ms. Freeman.
Hi. When we look at paying lawyers for these deals with Vermont Yankee and looking at what the state's going to do, we just spent, I don't even know how much time, a long time trying to clarify an amendment at town meeting that was worded in a way that's confusing. I don't think there's anyone in this room who has the training to understand the legal language that the state understands, that Energy understands. Energy's coming with big-money lawyers. The state's coming with big-money lawyers. If you want a good deal, you have to pay for the lawyers that are trained specifically in utilities. That's what you have to do. And again, we've already said it before, the money you raise today, the money that's already in there, is cheaper money. I'm not positive. I would assume it's in some kind of a savings account. Mine gets approximately less than 1%. But someday, that number might go up. Money that's sitting there is money that's making a little bit out of time. But if next, at the end of five years, when our contract's up with Energy, I don't know what the plan is. I assume there's going to be another negotiation, that's another round of lawyers. So if we want to protect ourselves, if we want to have money, we have to spend the money for professionals that know what they're doing. I don't know what I'm, I can, I'm having trouble following this. So I would not feel confident hiring some lawyer in general criminal proceedings to deal with Energy and to deal with the state.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment. Chair would recognize Mr. Spencer.
Echoing the need for potential legal advice, the town did vote to explore this natural gas-fired power plant, and we have no money as a planning commission to retain any professional services in this budget. We have less than 1,000, I believe, for minor expenses. I do anticipate the developers that are proposing this project seeking to negotiate some sort of payment in lieu of taxes with this community. And at that point, I would like to think that the Select Board and the Planning and Economic Development Commission, as we're called, would have resources to retain expert assistance. So I would support this appropriation. And as we all know, if we don't use it, we don't have to expend it. So thanks for that consideration.
Further debate on the proposed amendment. Back of the room, Mrs. Boyce.
Do we have a guesstimate of how much the bills are that are coming in that we already used this year?
The board and/or the treasurer is interrogated. Treasurer Turnley, if we can get her a microphone.
I have no estimate, as this is the first negotiation we've done with VY or Entergy, I would have no estimate on how much that would cost. I know there was a lot of time spent negotiating, and since it's never, we've never experienced it before, I couldn't even guess.
But we've done other negotiations, sorry, Mr. Moderator. Is there any follow-up?
Please do.
We've done other negotiations with VY before, and so we should maybe have kind of a guesstimate of what we're going to be experiencing?
Further discussion on the proposed amendment. Mr. Gant will recognize you in the back of the room. Called to question. Is there a second? Moved and seconded, we cease debate on the proposal of amendment. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have ceased debate. Again, the amendment would be to change the bottom line on Article 12 to read, "Appropriate 25,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Professional Services Fund." All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nays appear to have it. The nays do have it, and you have defeated the proposal of amendment. Again, we're back to, Article number 12 is originally moved to appropriate 50,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Professional Services Fund. Further discussion on the article. And we see none, so therefore, again, all those in favor of the article which reads, "To appropriate 50,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Professional Services Fund," please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have passed Article 12. Before I go to Article 13, just a brief reminder, someone has handed me, there will be a rabies clinic at the fire department March 13 from 1 until 4:00 PM, and also a chance for many people in Vernon who have not yet relicensed their dogs to be able to get a dog license. So therefore, we just wanted to pass that on. We go to Article 13. Shall the voters appropriate 40,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established Town of Vernon James Cusick Scholarship Fund? You'll find the fund report on Page 3 of your codicil. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Unruh.
And I promise this is the last time I do this. I move to appropriate 40,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established the Town of Vernon James Cusick Scholarship Fund.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded that the body appropriate 40,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established Town of Vernon James Cusick Scholarship Fund. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, I do not.
Discussion on the article. Middle of the room, Mr. Morrison.
I just, I'm a little surprised I'm going to speak to this, but I think we invest in our kids and our community through our schools and our rec departments and the other, the police department to make it safe. We do a lot of things to make this a place to put people on the right foot going forward. I actually would suggest we bottom this out. It came about in a day where we did have resources, and it just, it was just a nice way for the town to give families with a graduating senior sort of a little bump. Unfortunately, it is almost a negligible bump at this point, but for us as a town in an era where we don't have money, it's 40,000 that to go against the new gap from Vermont Yankee isn't a negligible amount. It's a material amount. So I think there's other ways to support our kids. I would actually encourage us to find a way to fundraise for our families to do that. I don't, I think we should bottom this out as a town responsibility.
Further discussion on the article. Back of the room, Ms. Freeman.
Hi. 40,000 in our overall budget is a small amount, but I'm not that far out of college, and I can tell you, as a college freshman and a college sophomore, to get a little bit of money is actually huge. And it feels really good when you go off to a school far away and the people in your community are supporting you. And I can tell you, when you take out a loan from the federal government, your interest of 6.6% starts that day, and you don't start repaying it for years. So that interest is compounding. And so what we're doing is actually giving these kids way more than what I think, I don't know, I think the amount of the scholarship is like 2,000 a kid in general around, no less than that, up? Okay. But you're actually giving them more than that, because if that's money they would have to borrow, that interest is charged from that, from that very second. And so I think we've looked at different options on how to cut this budget, and we've really made small chips. And what I saw was over 300,000 that had to be made up. But to take it from kids that are in college and need that little bit of money, I support this amendment. I hope other people support this amendment. I think we do a lot for lots of different groups of people, and, you know, college kids are still part of our community.
Further discussion on the motion. In the middle of the room, Mrs. Boemig.
I'll speak to this with some passion. My husband and I had two foster kids. We still kind of have them. They're our family, and we get to be grandparents. But our foster son, who was a really gifted, on-fire, wonderful kid, played sports, did well in school, if he didn't have scholarship help, he wouldn't have been able to go to college. He went to college. He's got a great job. He's got a great family. It was all paid for by scholarships from so many places. He spent hours and hours and hours and hours in the library at the high school researching and getting scholarships. We weren't in a place that we could have paid for a third kid to get to college. Like I said, I'm really passionate about this, and I don't think 40,000 is too much to pay. But look at, look at the school you guys have, you know? We're giving them such a good start. There are some kids who might not make it to college, and that 40,000 might get them there.
Further discussion. Mr. Dunkley.
My firm opinion is that this is a year to no longer fund this scholarship fund. I believe that to no longer be a great investment for our community, very few recipients ever come back to this town and are involved with our community. 40,000 is not a negligible amount, particularly this year. I think this fund has been great. I was a recipient, which indicates it was a poor investment, at least in my regard. Emily was a recipient. That was a good deal. But I, again, I firmly believe this is not, this is a year to no longer fund this.
Further discussion on the article over here.
Brandybro. We were just voting to reduce the professional services and some other departments by less than 40,000, and we had some heated discussion about it. There are a lot of families in this town that aren't even aware of how to apply for their kids for their scholarship. My family was one of them. I knew it was around, but didn't know how to even apply. And I have to agree, we need to make cuts. And I love kids. I think it's important that we help them, but I think that at this time, we need to consider cutting this and maybe consider in the future, but not for right now.
Further discussion on the article. Mrs. Boyce.
In the previous article, we just approved 50,000, and we don't even know how much we've spent this year, but we're willing to put another 50,000 in that fund. These children are our future. If you don't invest in your future, you won't have a future. 40,000 to this town, to these people, is nothing.
Further discussion on the article. Mr. Rosensky. Up here. Keep your hand up, keep your voter card up so we can see you.
Don Rosensky. Lot of us have put kids into college. Some of them made it through, some of them didn't. Some stuck around, some of them didn't. I think the important thing is, we've got to keep in the back of our minds, and Patty has said it, and other people have said it, we've got to chip away somewhere. This is the least painful place to do it, in my opinion. I paid my kids' college tuition. They dropped out. That's their problem. But as far as I'm concerned, this is not a year to do it. We should, I'm in agreement with Mr. Dunkley.
Further discussion on the article. Any other voter cards up? Back of the room. And then, back of the room, then we'll go to Mr. Hebert afterwards.
Faith Jobin, I am a single parent. I have a 17-year-old in 11th grade. Next year, he will be a senior, and then going on to college. I, for one, feel that this is a good money to invest in our children.
Chair would recognize Representative Hebert.
Thank you. I serve on the school board, as you all know, and annually, we get together and look at the Cusick Scholarship List. We just did that recently, and we approved the kids in town that were eligible for those scholarships. When you look at the list, a lot of those kids, that 1,000 makes a big difference as to whether they're going to school or not. Right now, we still have a somewhat discounted rate on our taxes. Looking at that list, and who those kids are, and what their opportunities are, this is a tremendous, and it is, it's a gift from the town, but it's a tremendous gift that gives them a head start and moves them forward on a college education. And there are kids on that list that would not begin college without that 1,000.
Further discussion on the article. Back of the room, Mr. Gant.
Andrew Gant, as much as I would love to support it, we spent last night arguing over if we were going to pay for the chair's department. We were just arguing over if we were going to be able to buy trucks that the town needed. I can't see giving the money to a fund when we have needs for roads and new equipment. And we have a cash cow that's gone. We can't keep dumping money in a hole that we may see a return on. I'm sorry, any kid that you're going to send to college is not coming back to Vernon anytime soon. They're going to go to where a place that actually has a job.
Further discussion on the article. We are going to recognize people who have not been recognized first before we recognize people for a second time. We're going to go to Mr. Ball.
Mike Ball, just wanted to point out, this isn't just about college. It's also about vocational schools, any accredited post-grad, not a post-grad, but both secondary schooling that you can go to, and it's certified. This, the scholarship fund can go to that.
Further discussion. Again, we're recognizing people on the question who've not been recognized yet before we go to people for a second time. I believe Treasurer Turnley.
We're not talking about discontinuing this fund. What they're talking about is funding for this year. They could cut the funding. There is 78,558.16 currently in that fund. So we're not talking about cutting the fund or getting rid of it. We're just talking about the funding for this year. There's the opportunity to cut some or all of it, and there'd still be money to fund it for this year.
Further discussion on the question. Again, we will recognize people for a second time now. We'll recognize Mr. Rosensky. You need to be recognized to be able to call the question.
Don Rosensky, I'll call the question.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded that we cease debate on the article. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and you have ceased debate. Again, the motion is to appropriate 40,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established Town of Vernon James Cusick Scholarship Fund. All those in favor of the article as read, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The chair is in doubt. All those in favor of passing the article, please stand. And could the clerks do a count for us? Please remain standing until you're counted. Ah, all right. So, please remain standing until you're all counted. Please be seated. All those against the article, please rise and be counted. Listen now to the results of your vote on the motion to appropriate $40,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established Town of Vernon James Cusick Scholarship Fund. Voting yes, 52. Voting no, 43. I declare Article 13 has passed. Article 14, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $26,962 for the Wyndham Solid Waste District to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund, which you'll find in your codicil on page four. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Virgoby.
I move to appropriate the sum of $26,962 for the Wyndham Solid Waste District. Can't hear me? Should I, never mind.
There you go.
I move to appropriate the sum of $26,962 for the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund.
We have a second. Moved and seconded to appropriate the sum of $26,962 for the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund. Mrs. Virgoby, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Just very briefly. The recycling committee had come to us a couple months ago now, I think, with a report on how Pay as You Throw was working financially, and it was coming in at a deficit. So, you know, one of the steps that the select board took, obviously, was to increase the price of the trash bags. But the other step that we took was to remove the district assessment from the calculation to determine whether or not Pay as You Throw was a successful self-sustaining program. I'm sure that Mr. Spencer can probably give lots of details as to what it is, what benefits we receive through this assessment, but from my understanding, we're required to be part of the district. But the major piece, I think, that we all see, the benefit that we get from belonging to the district, is the recycling bins at the town highway. That's a big part of what we receive as a benefit from this. And so, since we have to be part of the district anyway, we, as a select board, felt like this shouldn't be covered by the Pay as You Throw trash bags. So, we decided to remove that from the determination of whether Pay as You Throw was a successful program and to have it go through as an article to be paid by taxes.
Further discussion on the article. Seeing the gentleman in the second row raises his hand, please use your voter card so I make sure that, I know you are a town resident. Walter Doyle, please stand and speak your piece.
Just to try to understand what you're saying is that the $26,000, you're asking to raise that via taxes so that we don't have to have an increase in the bag?
Mrs. Virgoby, you're interrogated.
That is, the bag prices will probably remain the same at this time, but the assessment would be removed from what the cost of, what the price of the trash bags is trying to cover. Does that make sense?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. So, the, right now, the cost of the Pay as You Throw trash bags is paying for the collection and disposal of your trash. It's paying for the collection and the disposal of your recycling, and it pays for the compost. I think that's everything. So, before this article was in, it was also covering the cost of the district assessment. Again, the select board didn't think that that was fair to include that because, so, for instance, if we were to scrap curbside trash and recycling, we would still have this assessment from the district, and it would have to come from somewhere. So, that's why we felt like it should be raised by taxes instead of being covered by the Pay as You Throw trash bags.
But the Pay as You Go just increased. It went from three.
Even removing this, the bag price increases were necessary.
Okay.
Further discussion on the article. I think you go to Mrs. Howe and then to the back of the room afterwards.
Yes, Emily is absolutely correct in her summation. I know, you can't hear me. It's on, I'm sorry. Anytime I bring it closer, it's my lipstick that sets this thing off because I've got hot lips.
That will be in the minutes.
Let's get serious. This is serious business. Excuse me. We always took the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment out of the solid waste fund. Excuse me. And because we were using that within our calculations for the Pay as You Throw, that fund started to deplete fast. So, that we're not into a deficit, we felt that we needed to raise at least the assessment by taxes. We could either do it this way as an article or in the select board's budget, but we have to pay the district. It is the law. We have to, we have to belong to it. So, either way, we have to pay for this. It has been pretty much self-sufficient and coming out of the solid waste fund for the last few years. And so, this is why we've had to go to raising it by taxes this year because the solid waste fund is depleting.
Further discussion on the article, Mr. Parker.
Mark Parker. As somebody who uses the recycling on a weekly basis, and we use the compost for the cat litter and for the food and everything like that, and in the summertime, my grandson says it's time to feed the maggots. But something I'm curious about, as a town, we're doing really good at recycling and things of that nature. Is that correct?
The board is queried.
Yes, better than expected.
And I think that's fantastic. I mean, I go down there a lot of times and it's not uncommon to see the recycling bins full, and I think that's fantastic. It means it's working. And unfortunately, it also means that people are throwing away things that they shouldn't be, but that's a whole different topic. But since we're doing such a great job and we're saving the town, or the landfill, tons and tons of space and things of that nature, with the increase of the bags and everything, you know, if you're doing things right and you're doing things positive, it just seems like we're getting punished for doing the right thing. And as somebody who sees it on a weekly basis, now, I'm different than a lot of people. I can make one green bag. I fill one of those once every five weeks because we do things different at my house. Granted, there's only two of us and a very active four-year-old quite a bit, but that's our choice because we've learned how to do things differently. And recycling is a fantastic thing and we're fortunate to have it right here in town. But it just seems that because we're doing things the right way, we're getting punished. And that just doesn't make sense to a simpleton like myself.
Further discussion on the article. Back of the room, Mr. Jobin.
Thank you. I have a two-part question. The article is asking for $26,962, and the district assessment that you had was $28,868. So, there's a difference of like $2,000. That's the first part of the question. The second part is, is I had a conversation with Emily on Facebook, and I had asked about Pay as You Throw, the bags going up, and me getting a bin at my house. And I said, if more people get the bins from Franklin or Triple T themselves, what's going to happen with the bags? And you had said in that, that bags will go up again. So, I'm not sure how we can work this so that people aren't paying through the nose for the bags.
The board is queried.
Well, it's rather difficult to fund a program with something that you're trying to reduce. I mean, that's the logic behind this whole program, is that we're trying to pay for trash and recycling. We're trying to encourage reduction of trash, but that's how the program is being funded. So, I mean, that just in itself makes the program very difficult to keep it self-sustaining. The other, the other piece that I would like to point out to people is that there are a number of people I would expect, I'm making an assumption here, but I believe that there's a number of people, a number of households in town who are taking advantage of the recycling, which is fantastic, but they're not also participating in the trash. You know, they're bringing it to work or they're bringing it to school, or, you know, they're finding some other means, bringing it to Triple T directly or right up to Old Ferry Road. But that doesn't help cover the cost of, that is being incurred in town for, say, the recycling and the composting. So, you've got people who are taking, not taking advantage, but they're participating in, you know, the recycling and the composting, but they're not helping to contribute to the funding for that as well. So, it's kind of, those are two main reasons why I think we're going to have, you know, why we're looking at a deficit. And it is true, the more, the more participation we have in Pay as You Throw on the trash side, the more funding we have to pay for this. So, if participation decreases, so does the funding.
Further discussion. Before we go further, we're going to actually have Mrs. Harris. Go ahead.
Okay, Faith, the district assessment went down after that was printed. That's why there's difference in the numbers. State law says that we cannot pay for Pay as You Throw, pay for curbside trash with taxpayers' money. So, we have to do it this way. And I'd like to ask Heather to speak to this because she's on the recycling committee and a wealth of knowledge.
The recycling committee is going to respond.
Hello, my name is Heather and I'm on the recycling committee. There's a lot of variables involved in the whole program. And the assessment, this assessment fee, everyone is able to use it. You're able to bring things up to Wyndham County Solid Waste for free, computers, things of that nature, and use, and they provide education, et cetera. So, this is separate as Pay as You Throw, and we're trying to keep the costs down in Pay as You Throw. So, we need to remove this from the Pay as You Throw budget, if that helps.
Chair would recognize Mrs. O'Donnell. Oh, excuse me, Ms. Arms. Sorry, I couldn't tell whose hand that was.
Maddie Arms. I have a question about if any other ways were investigated as to reduce some of the cost for this, as in, instead of the recycling being picked up at the house every week, perhaps it could be picked up every other week. We still have the bins and I use the bins. I know that it's expensive for a truck driver and a truck to go around every week.
The recycling committee is being queried.
The Wyndham Solid Waste District fee is separate. It's a separate assessment. We cannot raise tax money for the disposal of trash. The committee is looking into reducing the Pay as You Throw, but this, we can't get rid of this fee. We're not voting on a Pay as You Throw, we're voting on the district fee. And we can't, we can't get rid of that fee. And to include it into the Pay as You Throw program makes it too costly. So, that's why it's a separate item.
There's a whole bunch of people flying around me with cards. Please be patient, I will get to you. All right, I'm going to go to the back of the room. I saw, I saw Mr. Ball have his hand, no, okay. Back here to Mr. Unruh.
I think I can answer your question, Maddie. We have a meeting with Triple T at the end of this month. It'll be the final select board meeting for this month to explore those options, whether going to a bi-weekly pickup or something like that is a better way to go, and will reduce the expense for the Pay as You Throw bags. Well, that's the hope. We're looking to change something to reduce the cost. That's the idea. That is being looked into, to answer your question.
Chair would recognize Mr. Rosinski.
Don Rosinski, I move the question.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, we cease debate on the article. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and you have ceased debate. The article has moved to appropriate the sum of $26,962 for the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund. All those in favor of the article as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You've passed Article 14. Article 15, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established elderly assistance fund, which you'll find on page two of your codicil. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Virgoby.
I move- I move to appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established elderly assistance fund.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded to appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established elderly assistance fund. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, sir.
Discussion on Article 15, Mr. Rosensky.
Mr. Moderator, considering the fact that we're all getting older, none of us are going in the other direction, I would urge everybody to support the elderly, the elderly assistance fund, Article 15. If we can take care of college scholarships, we should take care of the elderly.
Further discussion on Article 15, back of the room.
Carol Howe. I have worked for the elderly assistance doing jobs previously, and I don't think this was really set up the way it's being used. I see a terrible abuse on this, on people that have a lot of money, that are using this fund for their own benefit, to save money. I think it's, there should be a amount of money that you make a year, that's when you get elderly assistance, not just anybody that is elderly. I have never used it and I probably never will.
Further discussion on the article. Back, okay, there's another person ahead of you and I, and I will recognize you afterwards, Ms. Jobin.
I just have a clarification. The Bratton Borough Senior Meals for $500, is that people going up to Bratton Borough to get meals, or are the meals being brought down here to seniors?
Uh, Ms. Jobin, we're not discussing that. We are discussing the elderly assistance fund, which is Article 15.
That is.
No, that, that would be Article number 17. We're on Article 15. Is it on, is it part of the elderly assistance fund?
It is, yes.
Well, please continue then.
Okay. I just wasn't sure, because there was a deduction here. It says Bratton Borough Senior Meals, $500, but I wasn't sure if seniors have to go to Bratton Borough to get the meal, or if the meal comes to our seniors.
The board or whoever would be queried. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Sherlin.
In, in the past, Bratton Borough Meals on Wheels used to ask, they used to be one of those groups that would ask for donations. We asked them not to do that and we donate to Bratton Borough Meals on Wheels from our funds. So that's what that $500 is. And they don't go, they're, they're meals that are delivered to our people here.
From the senior housing.
Correct. But the money comes, they, the money comes from there, from Bratton Borough down to Vernon to pay for those meals. They're prepared in Vernon, but the money comes from Bratton Borough.
Further discussion on the question, Mrs. Terapinski.
Hi, I agree with Carol Howe. I am a senior and fortunately, I make enough money that I can pay my own bills at this point. And I really feel that there are abuses to this fund for people that are in my income bracket, that are just calling up and using the fund. I would like to see the fund continue. I'd like to see the money go in the fund, but I'd like there to be some kind of financial level that says this is a need because this is not just a gift to people that can afford it.
Further discussion on the article on the side of the room, right there.
Brandy Bro. My dad's on the Senior Meals program, so part of the way it works is they prepare the meals at Vernon Hall and then they have volunteers that deliver them to the residents, to the people that are on the program. And then the people on the program have the option to pay a certain dollar amount per meal, which is voluntary, but it's really urged that they, you know, people that, who can afford it, do give the money. But there are people that really could use some of these things where they might have the money, but they don't have the time. So like, somebody like my dad will pay for the meal. So if that helps to clarify at least the meal portion of it. It is funded out of Bratton Borough like they said, but that helps clarify at least some of that bit.
Further discussion on the article, Ms. Lockever.
I respectfully disagree with Linda Starr and Howie. Two years ago, I had both knees replaced and I do not, like you, Linda, I do not need, I do not have the financial need. I'm very fortunate. However, last, not this past winter, but the winter before, I needed help and Mary Lynn's son, paid for by the elderly assistance. I needed help shoveling my snow, clearing my driveway. It's only a tenth of a mile, but I needed help. So I have challenged, I am troubled by making it a financial, or suggesting it be a financial, putting that restriction on it, especially if there's physical needs.
Further discussion on Article 15, back of the room, Mrs. Boyce.
Maybe not so much as a financial level, but a resource test on it. If somebody's got $100,000 in the bank and they only make like $900 a month, they have a resource that they can draw on, especially if they're elderly. It's not like they're going to need it for retirement. They're already at that point. So not an income test, but a resource test. And I would urge you to vote yes on this motion.
Further discussion, Article 15, Mrs. Vrgoby.
A few years ago, I stood up and spoke to this very similar article and I'm, I'm going to repeat what I said then. I don't want to sway your vote on this article, but I would like to put it out there that we are a small community. And I really feel like, I think this is, this is a great fund and a great service that we provide to our seniors. But I know that I'm perfectly capable of snowblowing someone's driveway. And I would like to urge everybody that's here tonight and anybody who watches at home that if you have an elderly or a disabled neighbor and you notice that their driveway hasn't been plowed yet, pick up a shovel or send your kids over there. I'd like to see this town help take care of each other and that's one prime example of how we can put that into action and help each other out.
Further discussion on Article number 15, Mrs. Christiansen. That's Mrs. Christiansen.
Colleen Christiansen, I'm just wondering if there's somebody who can tell me what types of services are provided. The only thing I've heard about is no removal and I'm not against it, I'm just curious.
Either the select board or the elderly assistance committee is queried, Mrs. Sherlin.
Well, this winter, we've been fortunate and snow, snow removal hasn't been a big, big item. We have repaired roofs, we have repaired septic systems, we've probably put in, or Howie has probably put in most of the ramps in town that we have. We've done some yard work, not very much, because that really doesn't prevent you from living in your home. Most of the time when we've done that is because someone has been unable to, at that particular time, been able to do it themselves, maybe from broken arm or some, some circumstance like that. You name it and we probably have, have helped, helped do it.
Further discussion on the article, Mrs. Mosley.
Obviously, I qualify, but I don't use it. But I would like to see it expanded to include any disabled veterans of any age.
Further discussion on the article, people who haven't spoken yet, I believe that's Ms. Woodcock in the back of the room.
I'm just wondering if people are given other resources as well. There's the USDA rule development that has very low income programs for people that need ramps, specifically for elderly and disabled. Also, the Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust has programs available, so I hope that we're looking to these other resources as well.
Further discussion on the article, Mr. Rosensky will recognize you for, oh, you've already been, you've already spoken once, so we'll recognize him first for a second time.
Don Rosensky, I'd like to move the question.
Moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, we cease debate. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, you've ceased debate. Again, the motion is to appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established elderly assistance fund. All those in favor of Article 15 as read, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and you have passed Article 15. Article 16, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the reappraisal fund? And you'll find it on page one of your codicil. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Vrgoby.
I move to appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the reappraisal fund.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the reappraisal fund. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Any discussion on the article? In the middle of the room.
Is the current fund $180,453?
The board or the treasurer is interrogated.
What, what is the fund amount?
The treasurer shall answer your question.
Okay, Cindy Turnley, it's $200,662.23.
How much is a reappraisal? And when, when are we due for a reappraisal?
That would be answered by Mrs. Hammond.
Carol Hammond, listeners. What we are anticipating right now is reappraisal to be con-
Close, yes, close your mouth, please, thank you.
We are looking to have a reappraisal completed by 2018. We'll be sending out our request, RFPs, yes, request for proposal, from different reappraisal companies. We don't have a price on that, of course, yet, because we haven't sent them out. In the past, I believe that we did reappraisal in 2008, we were looking at, I think it was just under $200,000. Again, I, because we did it in-house last time, we did save quite a bit of money, whether we, whether it would be more beneficial to have a reappraisal company do it instead of doing it in-house, is what we want to determine. We're also looking at a possibility of changing the program that we use to make it more user-friendly than the one we have at present. So we hope to start, if we, the way we did it before, we took two years to do it. Depending on the reappraisal company that we hire, if we decide to do that, it could be a year or two years, but it would be finished by 2018 at any rate.
Further discussion on the article, Mr. Ball.
I'm interested what the CLA is currently at and then the, the person that answers it also define what the CLA is for everybody else. Thank you.
Someone is queried, I believe it would be the listeners.
The CLA is, is, the term means common level of appraisal. And it basically is the ratio between what we have, houses or properties, the market, the assessed value that we have compared to the market price, the market or sales price that, that, that properties are going for. The state, we have a three-year sales study that we do. This is what the state bases our sales study. That's what they base our CLA on. When this all came about, I don't know how many years ago, a CLA has been in as many years as I've been around doing lister work, but it's a three-year average, so it's not, you don't always have the most current sales. It's always three years, two years back. Up until last year, we were holding at about 12% assessed value above sales. And we felt we were, you know, we treat everybody the same, so we felt there was equity, even if the, even if the assessed value was higher than what houses were going for. Because we treat everybody the same, that, you know, it affects the tax rate, grand list is up here, tax rate is here. When the, you know, if, if we tried to pick and choose, which is, is not fair, the lower assessments, tax rate goes up because we have to have a certain amount of money to run, to run the town. The state, for whatever reason, because, because they, they always felt we were in an ascending market, there was never a trigger put on if the, if market values dropped below assessed values. It was always the other way. So if we dropped to below 80% of fair market value, we were required to assess. However, we could have a tax, we could have a CLA of 150 and there's nothing to say, other than common sense, of why we would have to appraise. We wanted, the reason we hadn't done it, well, even thinking about a couple of years ago, we wanted to wait to find out where we were going with Vermont Yankee, knowing that a lot of changes would be coming. So we felt we wanted to wait until we got things settled as much as possible with them. Most of you probably know, we were able to negotiate favorable settlements with TransCanada and with Velco for five years each. And we're very pleased with that. And it not only got them off our backs for five years, it meant no additional attorney costs, court costs, because we were in, we, they appealed every year and, you know, it was, it's expensive. So anyway, that's where we're at right now. We are, I don't know how much people want to hear, but this last year, this, this last year, when Vermont Yankee, you know, went, when they closed, they no longer paid the generation tax into the education fund. And they were put on our education grand list for the first time in, I'm not sure how many years, since 98, 2000, something like that. So it was, you know, it was a shock to us, shock to them, because the state didn't come to us until after, everybody's tax bills had gone out and then they let us know that we had to send them additional bill or the taxpayers would pick up the difference. So we did that and they, they handled it very, very well. But in putting them back on our education grand list, it moved our common level appraisal from 111 down to 104, which it's just, what, you know, and what that is saying, that it's only, that, that, that we're only 4% off in the ratio between market and assessment. And that's just not true. I mean, we're closer to 15% now. So we felt that we really had to do something, we were just very grateful that we could work. work something out with Vermont Yankee for this year, and be able to get the process started for reappraisal. Long answer to short question.
Further discussion on Article 16, Mr. Christensen.
Gordon Christensen, I would just have a question for the town treasurer. I'm just curious, Cindy, on many of our funds, I see that the assets are invested at the People's United Bank, and I was under the impression that that was all in fixed interest-bearing accounts. I may be right or wrong, please let me know. But I'm just curious as to the accounting, because on most of the funds, we're seeing where we have net investment gains, and then a deduction of net investment losses. And would it not just be easier, for example, in this case, where we have $312 in gains, $92 in losses, just to list that as a $220 gain? Just looking for clarification. Thank you.
Mrs. Turnley.
Cindy Turnley, yes, it would. However, a few years back, the then-in-house auditors decided that it was, it was better to show both the loss and the gain separately. So that's how we've been doing it since.
So how do you have a loss and a gain in the same fiscal year?
It's done quarterly, so like, one quarter we might lose money, the next quarter we gain money, and it's posted quarterly, so if, if, first quarter we lost $20, it goes as a loss, the second quarter we made $50, it goes as a gain. And at that time, they decided they wanted to show it separately, this, we lost this much, and we gained this much. Prior to that, we always just showed it, you know, like you said, $50 minus $20, this means we gained $30.
Okay, so then these accounts are invested in other than fixed interest-bearing accounts?
Yes.
So that we have risk involved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on Article number 16. Seeing none. The motion is to appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the reappraisal fund. All those in favor of Article 16 as read, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, you have passed Article 16. Article number 17, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $17,420 to be raised by taxes to support the following in the designated amounts by petition. And we will list those in the motion. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Dunkley.
I move to appropriate the sum of $17,420 to be raised by taxes to support the following in the designated amounts. This article is by petition. The current, $600. Green Mountain RSVP, $510. Senior Solutions, $810. Visiting Nurse and Hospice of Vermont and New Hampshire, $6,500. The Brower Area Hospice, $300. Southeast Vermont Economic Development Strategies, SEVIDS, for $6,600. And SEVCA, Southeast Vermont Community Action.
Is there a second?
$210.
Is there a second?
$2100.
Again, I repeat, is there a second? Thank you. The motion to appropriate the sum of $17,420 to be raised by taxes to support the following in the designated amounts, the article by petition, the current, $600. Green Mountain RSVP, $510. Senior Solutions, $810. Visiting Nurse and Hospice of Vermont and New Hampshire, $6,500. Brattleboro Area Hospice, $300. SEVIDS, the Southeast Vermont Economic Development Strategies, $6,600. SEVCA, Southeast Vermont Community Action, $2100. Mr. Dunkley, do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, I believe it speaks for itself.
All right, further discussion on Article 17, back of the room, Ms. Jobin.
Faith Jobin, everybody has been talking about cutting monies, this is a great way to cut. I personally give to area donations, nonprofits, out of my own pocket. I don't think it should come out of my taxes, and Patty in years past has said it's only two cents per, per dollar, or whatever it is, but it's still my tax money. I don't think it should come out of our taxes, so I think this should be negated.
Further discussion, we're going to go to, actually, the, the person with, with the card up in the back of the room was first, and we'll then go over here. So please, continue.
Hi, Karen Woodcock. I actually work at SEVCA, so I would like to just give you a little overview of what we have provided to the town of Vernon this year. If everyone is aware of what SEVCA is, Southeastern Vermont Community Action, basically what we do is we help to reduce the causes and move toward the elimination of poverty in our communities. Over the past year, we've helped with weatherization of homes, I'm sure you've seen our trucks around. We also help with emergency heating systems, when people's furnaces and so forth are red-tagged. We help with micro-business, people trying to start their own business or have existing businesses. The Individual Development Account, where we help people to learn how to save money, it's a match savings program, they can use that money towards buying their first home, towards education, helping for people to go to college. We had two people that are using it for college, and also for starting a business. Our Vermont Health Connect, we have a navigator that helps people sign up for their insurance through the navigator system in Vermont, which is very, very difficult. Emergency Services, we also do the fuel and, fuel assistance and utility for emergency fuel, and also other housing and other support services. So in the town of Vernon, we have helped 65 households over the past year, for a total of $27,600. And we are asking for $2100, which is basically unrestricted funds that we can use towards, usually for fuel assistance and for emergency services to households. Thank you.
Further discussion on the article, we saw Mr. Gall have his hand up first.
Bruce Gall, I agree that all of these organizations are worthy and wonderful causes, but I don't like, and I don't think anybody should be told who they have to donate to. You know, I may donate to these people on my own, but I don't want to be mandated that I have to donate to a certain organization.
Further discussion on the article, Mr. Langveld.
Martin Langveld, I serve on the planning board in Vernon. I also happen to be the perpetrator along with Brana over here of the vernonvermont.org website. That's an aside. I serve on the board of SEVIDS, I've been on that board for three years. SEVIDS was formed in an effort to respond to the, the problem in this region that we had a, no population growth, we had very stagnant wages, and we had no new jobs being created. And we were looking at a future that we knew at some point in time was going to have the closing of Vermont Yankee, whether that happened 20 years from now, or in the shorter term, as, which is, as it, as it turned out. So SEVIDS created a plan called the SEDS, which is a federally mandated plan, if you want to qualify for certain kinds of federal assistance. We completed that plan, that has already paid off in the, in the form of certain kinds of grants for BDCC and other organizations. SEVIDS really is focused on helping to create jobs, helping to make the area more attractive for young people to come to and start businesses, and, and join businesses that are here, or for, for our own young people to come back to this area. We had a comment here that they go to college and they never come back. Well, you know, if we can do something to make this area more economically viable, to create jobs, to help small businesses to grow, then we've got, we give them something to come back to. Some of the kinds of programs that we have going, Fast Tracks to Success is a program that is starting in the fall, that is actually going to connect people in the high schools to some of the businesses that are around here, to teach them what kind of, what kind of job opportunities there actually are. You know, we have high-tech businesses in this area that look for people that can't find them. And then we have kids that don't know those jobs exist, and that they could be trained for those jobs. We have an internship program that has placed 48 interns, 20% of those have turned in, have been hired by the companies where they interned. We have a Young Professionals Network that is helping to make the area more attractive for young people to come to. We're building industry clusters, like the green building cluster, we happen to have a lot of green building industries here, and that is something to build on, and to help to create more businesses. And, you know, we really are having results in all of these areas. Wyndham County, as it happened, before Vermont Yankee closed, started to actually turn around and, and create more jobs, and actually led the state in terms of job creation, and, and also GDP. So this is a small part of our budget, but I think it's important for us to, to take a small piece, we can cut, and we can cut, and we can cut here and cut there, but, but, you know, we need to invest a little bit into job creation. This is $3 per head in the town, it's already been improved by Brattleboro, Dover, Marlborough, Newfane, Putney, Rockingham, Weston, Wilmington, and Westminster, and we should be on that list. Thank you.
Further discussion on the article, plenty of hands, and I will try to get to all of you, so please be patient. Mrs. Sherlin.
I have the report for Senior Solutions, which used to be Council on Aging, and they provided general information and assistance for 134 people from Vernon with just general information on applying for benefits, like health insurance, housing needs, fuel assistance. They helped 15 residents with applying for Medicare Part D or Advantage Plan enrollments. The Meals on Wheels that we were talking about, there was a total of 2,162 meals that were delivered in Vernon. They provided 16 residents with in-home case management, which enabled them to remain in their home, and those are services that the Elderly Assistance Board in Vernon can't provide. They also are the administer, administrators of the Cookie Allen Fund, which provides grants for transportation assistive devices, and those are again, things that elderly assist, some of those things that elderly assistants can't provide. So they provide family caregiver support, nutrition services and programs, and a variety of other services, such sometimes legal assistance, health and wellness, information, and other types of counseling, so.
Further discussion on the article, Mr. Morrison.
An alternative way to think about, I, I think I understand the aversion to feeling like you're being asked to contribute to a nonprofit, which a couple of people have voiced. I hope you're feeling more comfort just hearing how much they do, but I'll say, most nonprofits will have part of their revenue that is fee-for-service. So in a sense, if it helps you feel more comfortable, in fact, these are the equivalent of an agency that we can't afford as a town, providing a, a great amount of service, as we've already heard spoken to, and it's not a donation. It's a very modest fee-for-service contribution that we're making to some organizations that are regional, in their efforts, so we get to benefit from them as a town, our citizens get to benefit, whether it's our seniors or young people looking for opportunity. So I guess, I hear you, it's not World Wildlife Fund, so if, or others like that, so there's just, if that's sort of a principled version, I would suggest we think of it as, it's a fee-for-service, which most nonprofits are going to have grants, they're going to have individual donations, and there's fee-for-service, among other things.
Further discussion on the article, back of the room, Mr. Gant will work her way up.
Andrew Gant, I want to second what Faith stated. If it's going to a nonprofit, it is a donation, and with simple budgeting, if you need to cut back, you cut back on donations first. We need places to cut, this is going to be a very painless place to cut, for, for the town. The organizations, as stated, have many other towns giving to them, many other towns that aren't losing, VY.
Further discussion on the article, we're going to go to Ms. Frost first. First one and then the other, how's that?
Mother has privileges. Are we voting on this by paper ballot, with, we can mark which ones we'd like to support or not support?
If there is a request for that, are you requesting that?
I am requesting that. That might change, you know, we wouldn't have to sit here and discuss it all night, we could just vote for the ones we want or don't want.
And again-
I thought we might have a ballot already made up.
Again, to do a paper ballot, your request needs to be sustained by seven others? Are there seven others who wish to stand and say they also want a paper ballot? I believe you've got it, so we are doing a paper ballot. But we, but we will do further discussion on the question. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am, wait, wait there.
Brandy Bro, I'll try to be quick, because everything is going long. I know that we were just voting on the CUSAC fund and voted to do $40,000 there. This is one of those things, well, at least with the medical things, like the hospice and visiting nurses, it's one of those things where you invest in something that you might need in the future that you don't know, you don't know that you need. And I say that because just about seven years ago, my daughter was born with a rare chromosome disorder, and ended up in heart failure, and on a heart monitor coming home, and I had no time to myself, and my daughter was chronically ill. And at that point, I had no help, and I couldn't be living in the doctor office every day of the week, even though we were there several days a week. The visiting nurses were indispensable to me, helped me to get my daughter and keep her, to get her through so she would be well. You don't know that you need a service like that until it hits you. And this is one of those things where, at least with the medical things here, that are requesting services, you know, be funded, it's something that you can't pay for out of pocket, you just need a person there who knows what they're doing. And that's what these services are, people there that will come in and help you in your need while you are in the trench and not knowing what to do. Please support at least the medical portions, that's why I stood and asked for a paper vote, because I can vote for those particular ones and maybe not others.
Further discussion, back of the room, Ms. Freeman. We are going to continue debate, sir, until we cease debate. Thank you for asking.
I just want to say that I was here on Monday night, and, you know, different departments got up and said, I need this much money, and some departments, we said, okay, and some, we talked about this or that, and now we're on Article, what are we on? Seven, 17, and we're starting to look at, can we cut $800, or can we cut $600? The time for like, the big cuts has passed, and so if you wanted to make big cuts to the budget, we should have done it on the big-ticket items. And now you're asking for a paper ballot, so some people can vote for things that are important to them, and not vote for things that are important to other people. These are services for our community, for people that have emergencies. And I think it's already been stated, these services are given to us already, because they're regional services. So you get them. And so this is a contribution in case you need them, so that someday you can have them, and that you've supported other people.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion, we're going to recognize this gentleman here, I don't believe he's a Vernon resident, please stand and state your name, first of all.
That's correct, I'm not, my name is, hello? Okay. My name is R.T. Brown, I'm here to talk about SEVIDS.
Okay, Mr. Brown, unless there's objection from the body, you'll be allowed to continue. Any objection? Any objection?
Yes, I have talked about it.
Okay.
I've already talked.
Okay. All right. Further discussion over here?
Can I ask to cease discussion?
Yes, that would be an appropriate thing for you to do if you wish.
I would like to ask to cease discussion.
Moved and seconded, we cease debate on the article. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, we've ceased debate. Hold up your voter cards. The clerks will pass out the ballots, and we will have two ballot boxes for you to be able to put your ballots in. Please take your seats so we can restart the meeting. We're back in order. Please listen to the results of your vote on Article Number 17. By ballot, Human Service Funding for the Current, 44 ayes, 41 no. I declare that matter has passed. Green Mountain RSVP, 52 ayes, 34 no. I declare that matter has passed. Excuse me. Thank you. Senior Solutions, 63 ayes, 23 no. I declare that matter has passed. Visiting Nurse and Hospice, Vermont, New Hampshire, 66 ayes, 22 no. I declare that matter has passed. Brattleboro Area Hospice, 65 ayes, 22 no. I declare that matter has passed. Sevets, Southern Vermont or Southeast Vermont Economic Development Strategies, 44 ayes, 39 no. I declare that matter has passed. And Southeast Community Action or SEVCA, 63 ayes, 26 no. I declare that matter has also passed. We move now to Article 18. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for the operation of the Emergency Management Office? Do we have a motion on the floor? Mr. Moderator. Mr. Dunkley.
I move to appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for the operation of the Emergency Management Office.
Sir, second. Moved and seconded, we appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for operation of the Emergency Management Office. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Dunkley or anybody else on the board?
Seeing as everything I learned about this article, I learned from Chris Howe, I pass the ball to her.
The microphone has been passed to Mrs. Howe. Please continue.
It's radioactive. Yes, the state of Vermont and Entergy used to supplement the running of the Emergency Management Office. They will no longer, as of April 30th, be handing out money to any towns. They used to do all towns in EPZ zone, but they don't anymore, or they will not. Vernon being a little bit special because we still host VY, we may or may not get something, which may be about $5,000 if we get anything. This is to, the money is for operation of, it's to give the EMD a little bit of a stipend. I will not be the EMD as of June 30th. Just put that out there, it's not going to be me. But myself, I would give to the crew as well, to a little bit of a stipend, so that they would, I could show my appreciation, which was allowed in their funds. Their funds were about $30,000 a year, give or take a few, and any supplies, any big heavy equipment that I needed. And I don't know what else to say. I guess that's pretty much it, just office supplies. We've had generators we've purchased, we've purchased computers, printers, we pay for telephones and the cable for internet, and then anytime we get together, we get a little bit of a treat, we get some snacks and stuff like that. We also have, we're setting up right now, all hazard plans, and so we're trying to meet monthly, and now we're going to have to supply the papers and things like that, all business matters with the emergency management. So, Josh, did you want to say something?
Sure.
Mr. Unruh.
So, I'm also on the Emergency Management Board. Just to kind of give you guys an idea of what we do, up until this year, we had consistent training and consistent, what would you say, FEMA?
Drills.
Drills, some that were graded, some that weren't, to see how well we do as an emergency management team for the town. Basically, what the emergency management team is responsible for doing is during a event, whether it be hurricane, the nuclear plant, something happens there, a train derailment with hazardous waste, the emergency management team goes into action, makes sure that everyone in the town is safe, whether it be we remove children from the school, away from the railroad, whether it be we evacuate the Vernon senior housing, all that's done by basically a volunteer group. Chris was nice enough to give, you know, everybody on the team a stipend this last year out of her pay, which I think was awesome and a great thing to do to bring our board together. Basically, it's to be able to continue that. With no funding coming from VY, we essentially have no emergency management committee anymore. We have limited resources of what we can do. We're all volunteer board anyway, with the exception of the Emergency Management Director and the funds that she divvies out to us. So, that team can still be in place, but without the money, we can't run the facility. We don't have phone lines, we don't have faxes, we don't have the things that we need to make sure that the town's safe in event of emergency.
Further discussion on Article Number 18. Mr. Ball.
Mike Ball. Quick question. Vermont Yankee basically donates the building and the land to the town. Is that going to be continuing on for some period of time?
The board has queried.
We don't have an answer to that yet. The property Mr. Ball is talking about is the house that is directly next to Vermont Yankee's maintenance shed, that's right outside their gates. That little white house right to the right is our Emergency Management Center. That is VY's property. We don't know whether they're continuing to give it to us or not to utilize, so we may be looking for alternatives to, you know, use the basement of the town office, use part of the fire department, which I seriously doubt is going to happen because they don't have the room. So, that's up in the air, and will make a big choice for us to come to when the time comes, when we'll find out. We really don't know where we're going to end up.
Further discussion on the article? Seeing none, the article is that we appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for operation of the Emergency Management Office. All those in favor of Article 18 as, oh, I did not see you.
I was behind the guy.
Okay, yes, thank you. I'm occasionally blocked by the cameraman, so thank you. Ms. Jobin.
My question is, Chris said that she is going to be all done. Do you have somebody that is going to be appointed or voted in, or how's that working?
Ms. Howe, you are interrogated.
We have somebody that has showed interest and spoke to me about it, David Emery.
Further discussion on the article? Mr. Christensen.
Gordon Christensen, it is my opinion that we have failed to heed the challenge that was presented to us at the beginning of our meetings on Monday by Patty O'Donnell. We have financial challenges ahead of us as this town has lost, as we know, VY. I believe we have failed in protecting the future of our senior citizens who are on a fixed income. We have allocated, appropriated $20,000 to their senior assistants. Great, I think that's awesome. But our senior citizens are on a fixed income, and those of us that are still working here, paying the majority of these taxes, can afford to do that. But I am concerned that as we continue to spend, as we have in years past, the burden which will fall upon all of us will be most difficult to overcome by our senior citizens, whether they're receiving just social security or some pension, that's all that they have. What I am afraid of is that we have allowed so many of our appropriations, free lunches, free libraries, the free lunch, the day of the free lunch in Vernon has to come to an end. It's just a fact. So, anyway, let me give you my brief opinion on this article, 18. As far as appropriating $15,000, it would be no.
Chair would recognize Mrs. Howe.
Well, somebody asked me if there was somebody else, and I gave a name. That would be totally up to the select board, not just me or to name somebody. I just want you to know that the board would have to make that decision.
Back of the room, Mr. Gant.
I would like to partially agree with Gordy. I do feel we have failed with this meeting to cut budgets where needed. However, the emergency is not where we need to cut. With Katrina just a couple of years ago, natural disaster, I know as a man that's raising a family in this town, I would like the services to help keep them safe. No, we don't need free lunches. No, we don't need to move the bookshelves in the library. Yes, we do need to watch out for the goodwill and the common health of the people in this town, and that's what this board helps do.
Further discussion on Article 18. In the middle of the room, Heather.
I'd like to make a motion to cease discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, we cease debate. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and you've ceased debate. Again, the motion is to appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for operation of the Emergency Management Office. All those in favor of passing Article 18 as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, you've passed Article 18. Article 19. Article 19 is, shall the voters authorize establishment of a reserve fund to be called the Culvert Reserve Fund to be used for the purpose of purchasing culverts? Is there a motion? Mr. Moderator. Mr. Dunkley.
I move to authorize the establishment of a reserve fund to be called the Culvert Reserve Fund to be used for the purpose of purchasing culverts.
Sir, second. Moved and seconded, that we authorize establishment of a reserve fund to be called the Culvert Reserve Fund to be used for the purpose of purchasing culverts. Discussion on the motion?
Briefly, I would mention that on Monday night, my eyes were open to the value of culverts. And in fact, I would thank Mr. Ball for teaching me to love and appreciate culverts.
Further discussion on the motion? Back of the room, Mr. Walker.
Yeah, I'd just like to speak on this. We do have to reword it a little bit because it's for a replacement of culverts 36-inch or larger. It used to be we could go out and change a four-foot culvert without going through the state. They have changed the rules. They have dust down anything from 36 and up. We need to have the hydraulic study, it's got to be all engineered, and we're going to have to put in what they recommend. So, they mentioned you guys might want to start a fund, so I asked how this put in there just for this reason, so we can start slowly.
All right, further discussion on the motion? Mr. Rosensky.
You probably know what I want to say. I want to move the question.
All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, you've ceased debate. Again, the motion is to authorize the establishment of a reserve fund to be called the Culvert Reserve Fund to be used for purchases, for the purpose of purchasing culverts. All those in favor of the article as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and you have passed Article 19. Article 20. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Culvert Reserve Fund? Is there a motion? Mr. Moderator. Mr. Dunkley.
I move to appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Culvert Reserve Fund.
There a second? Moved and seconded, that we appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Culvert Reserve Fund. Discussion on the motion?
Not by me.
Mr. Christensen.
Mr. Walker, just curious as to why the $10,000 isn't simply added to your culverts line under highway maintenance and why we need a separate fund, again, another reserve fund, when it's all part of your highway department?
Mr. Walker.
We won't be able to do these until it's all engineered, and it's going to have to start covering the costs of all the engineering costs. The state's going to come down to a hydraulic study. I don't have that in my regular budget.
Mr. Christensen, one follow-up.
You had the opportunity, I believe, though, to submit that in your regular budget, did you not?
These are going to be more than $10,000. We're trying to get the funds started. You're talking $150,000, $200,000 is what we will be spending when we start getting into this.
Budget it into your highway department.
Chair would recognize Mrs. Boyce.
Well, this is already a mute point because the last article got closed up before we had an opportunity to speak on it. Why are we starting yet another fund? Isn't there another, somewhere we can put this as a reserve? Can it go in the capital fund rather than starting another little piggy bank somewhere?
The board has queried Mrs. Bergobe.
I would say that this cannot go into the capital fund because a culvert can't be considered an asset, just like our roads aren't considered, I mean, they're an asset to us, but they're not on the books considered an asset. So, essentially, what we're doing here is the same thing that we're doing for the capital fund. You know, we're setting money aside over time because we know that we have an investment coming up in the future. This fund is the same way that we're doing that with the capital fund, but it can't go in the capital fund because a culvert is not considered an asset.
Further discussion on the motion? Back of the room, Ms. Jobin.
I have a question as to how many culverts that $100, $150,000 is going to actually buy.
Commissioner Walker is interrogated.
I really can't tell you what that will get you, Faith. It's going to depend on what the state, when they come down and tell us what we're going to put in. Central Park is $298,000, the one we're doing. So, yeah, it's not just Vernon, it's all the towns.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the motion again is to appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Culvert Reserve Fund. All those in favor of passing Article 20 as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, you've passed Article 20. Article 21 reads as follows. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $2,500 to be raised by taxes to fund the town parking lots maintenance fund? You'll find the fund report on page five of your codicil. Is there a motion? Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator. Mr. Dunkley.
I move to appropriate the sum of $2,500 to be raised by taxes to fund the town parking lots maintenance fund.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, that the town appropriate the sum of $2,500 to be raised by taxes to fund the town parking lots maintenance fund. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I don't, but perhaps David Walker would.
Chair would recognize Commissioner Walker.
This is a fund that we have for four parking lots. We know down the road that we're going to have to do them again. We're just trying to keep money going in and the cost will just keep going up. That's all I'm trying to do is keep it.
Discussion on the motion. Further discussion, Ms. Frost.
How much money is currently in the fund?
The treasurer is interrogated.
There might have been something, then. Cindy Turnley, the current amount in that fund is $62,390.80.
And what is the projected timeframe for when we'll have to resurface any one of these lots?
And Commissioner Walker will now be asked to answer that question.
The specific timeframe, every year I go over them. If we need to crack seal them, we do the crack sealing. We have it all resealed. As far as the actual big expense of an overlay, right now, everything's looking good, so I would say you're looking probably five, 12 years down the road before another real big expense.
Further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, the motion again reads to appropriate the sum of $2,500 to be raised by taxes to fund the town parking lots maintenance fund. All those in favor of passing Article 21 as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, you've passed Article 21. Article 22. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be raised by taxes to repair the cemetery headstones? Do we have a motion? Mrs. Harris.
Is this on?
Yes, it is.
I move to appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be raised by taxes to repair the cemetery headstones.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, we appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be raised by taxes to repair the cemetery headstones. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I will defer to our cemetery chair, Mary Lynn Sherlin.
The cemetery chair has been recognized.
Several years ago, some of you may remember that we asked for $66,000 to do some, a lot, a lot of repairs for headstones in cemeteries. We do not want to do that again. And every year when we do our walkthroughs of the cemeteries, we look for things that need to be repaired. We again have found some stones that are falling apart. None of this is done by vandalism. It's stones that are old. We've found a couple that have fallen off the bases or just have fallen over because ground is settled. So we need to get a secure base in there and get them uprighted. We have some old stones that, where they didn't put bases under them, that we need to, they're sinking in the ground, so they can't be seen. We need to get them brought back up so they can be seen. So we're trying not to get back up to that great huge number again, so doing some every year or keeping ahead of this project.
Further discussion on the motion, Ms. Jobin.
Thank you. I don't know if last time we talked about this, if the question had been asked as to whether or not families were asked to incur the cost instead of the town. Because the families put in the headstone, so I don't understand why it should be incurred by the town when the body is put there by the family.
Cemetery committee chair is interrogated.
Many of these headstones are so old, there's no family here.
Could resell the plot?
You can't resell the plot, George. You can't do that. And they've paid for, you know, in buying, in buying a lot, you're paying, that's part of paying for it is perpetual care. So the town is responsible.
One follow-up, and there's other people who want to speak.
Then since it's perpetual care, why don't you go up on the rate for the cemetery plot so that it's in there?
We're getting there. We're getting there.
All right, Mr. Gant, back of the room.
I almost hesitate to say this because I don't want to sound extremely disrespectful. The dead don't care that the headstones there and we need to cut money.
Further discussion on the article. Mr. Hebert.
Call a question, I want to be done.
Again, could you say that into the microphone, sir?
Yes, I'd like to call a question, I want to be Don Rosensky.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, we cease debate. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, you've ceased debate. Again, the motion is to appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be raised by taxes to repair the cemetery headstones. All those in favor of passing Article 22 as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The chair is endowed. All those in favor, please stand. Please, if we could have the clerk and the tellers get the numbers. Please be seated. All those opposed, please stand with their order cards. Please listen to the results of your vote. On the matter of Article 22, those voting yes, 49. Those voting no, 17. The article is passed. Article 23. Shall the voters set the cost of graves at the cemeteries at $150, plus the cost of corner markers for residents, and $300, plus the cost of the corner markers for non-residents? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Harris.
I move to set the cost of the graves at the cemeteries at $150, plus the cost of the corner markers for residents, and $300, plus the cost of corner markers for non-residents.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, to set the cost of the graves at the cemeteries at $150, plus the cost of corner markers for residents, and $300, plus the cost of corner markers for non-residents. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I will defer to Mary Lynn again.
All right.
Mary Lynn?
Currently, lots are $150 for residents, which includes corner markers, and $300 for non-residents, including the corner markers. Corner markers are a cost of $225. So selling one lot, the cemetery funds are at a loss. So we need to increase the cost. So we decided upon leaving the cost at $150 for the lot, plus the cost of corner markers, and that covers if that corner marker cost goes up, then we're covered and not have to go back and readdress this.
Further discussion on the motion, Mr. Rosensky. They're coming your way, Don.
Don Rosensky, I'm not calling the question. I want to say that burial plots, this sounds dirt. This sounds, this sounds inexpensive. And did anybody, has anybody checked out what like they're getting for plots up to St. Michael's or Morningside or places like that?
The cemetery committee is interrogated if you so choose.
I think the average lot in Brattleboro is somewhere around the $400 to $500.
Further discussion on the motion, Mr. Gant, back of the room.
I would agree with Mr. Rosensky. It does sound dirt cheap and I would like to amend that we double these and go to 300 for resident and 600 for a non-resident.
Is there a second? The motion to amend the motion to set the cost of graves at cemeteries at $300, plus the cost of corner markers for residents, and $600, plus the cost of corner markers for non-residents. Mr. Gant, thank you for writing the motion down. Do you wish, do you have anything further to say once you get that written down?
We need to be making money somewhere. This is an area that I would hate for us to be able to capitalize on, but if we can bring some more money into the town, we need to do it however we can.
Further discussion on the amendment, Mrs. Bergobe.
I want to, yeah, double check with Mary Lynn, but I believe that the sale of the plots goes into the cemetery fund, which means that the money can only be spent on the cemeteries. It doesn't go into the general fund. Just, I'd like her confirmation on that, but just double check.
Mary Lynn?
Correct. When the lot is sold, that money goes into that particular cemetery fund, and it can only be used for, the interest gain from that money can only be used for certain things. It doesn't go into the general fund for the town.
Is there a way to appropriate a percent of that to go back into the general fund?
No. Those cemeteries were established by certain rules, most of them by wills, giving that land for the cemetery. So it's, there it is. Can't change somebody's will.
Before we recognize anybody else for a second time, Ms. Jobin.
If the amendment were to go into effect, would that start July 1st?
Someone is queried here. Either the board, the maker of the amendment, the cemetery committee.
Yes, it would.
Mrs. Harris.
Yes.
Please, we need order. Thank you. All right, further discussion on the amendment. Ms. Brow.
Randy Brow. Does that mean that monies that raised from there would or could be used to repair the headstones in the future?
Let's get an answer before we go elsewhere.
We can only use the interest from those funds, so it, to put the requirement underneath a flat stone is $180 currently. So just to raise one stone, so the labor to do that, put the material underneath that's Some of our funds aren't even earning that much interest in a year. So if we have two or three stones in one cemetery, we can't do that.
One follow-up, please.
So then what does the money from the sale of the lots specifically go for?
It goes into the fund, but I mean, with interest where it is, I mean, if there's a higher interest rate, then that would be wonderful, but, I mean, none of the town funds are earning great interest. So, I mean, we can do repairs, we can do those things, but we don't have enough interest in there to do, we do use the interest. We've done, we've used some of it because we've done some tree pruning in the cemeteries that needs to be done. We've, we've done that type of work and we take out that little bit that's there, but it doesn't cover everything.
Further discussion on the amendment. I believe Mr. Pond had his hand up.
George Pond. I can confide with what this gentleman was saying. I have a plot in Dumerson Center that was given to me from my parents, and it's a four-hole plot. And me and my wife both choose to be buried there, but because it's a four-hole plot, there's already three people there. If I, if my wife, if I bury my wife in that plot and myself, it costs me $300 extra on top of what we've already paid for the plot. So, you know, a buck fifty, that's a pretty good deal.
Further discussion on the amendment, Ms. Frost.
I guess my concern would be if this doesn't go into effect until July 1st, that a lot of people will be buying plots ahead, and I know from volunteering in town clerk's office that has already happened.
Further discussion on the amendment, Mr. Rosensky.
Don Rosensky, I'm kind of surprised that we're just appropriating five grand to fix headstones and we're going to be doing burial plot prices and putting money in an account that you can't touch. That's downright foolish. So if it, if it need be, I would maybe form another fund, you've got a ton of them already, and just have it be the cemetery, what?
Cemetery Reserve.
Yeah, just like everything else. I mean, it's really, I don't know how much money we've got sitting in there, but if you can only touch the interest, that is, that's absurd.
Further discussion on the amendment, Mr. Christensen.
Yeah, just to follow up, I think we need some more clarification or change the rules. If we're getting $600 now for a non-resident plot, are you actually saying we can't, you can't use that money to do repairs? You can only use the interest. That does sound ludicrous.
Any further discussion? Back of the room, Mr. Howe.
Carol Howe, who paid, where does the money for the lawn mowing, which is pretty expensive, come from?
Cemetery committee is interrogated. Mary Lynn?
Who mows the lawns, the cemetery lots? Somebody mows them. I think my cousin.
We have a budget that the contract for the caretakers is in that budget.
So the money for the lawn, doing the cemetery comes from the budget, but the money that's bought lots and all that stuff, you can't use that for anything?
Correct.
Further discussion on the amendment, Mr. Gold.
I just want to help clarify and correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason we can't spend the money is because the land was left as a trust and the rules were set by the trust, so we can't change them. We can't take the money and put it in another fund. We can't spend it for anything other than what the trust designates that we can spend it for. So if we put, charge $300 for a lot, the monies, we're putting money in there that we can't use. So all we should be charging for a lot is what it costs us to do the lot.
Further discussion on the motion. Mrs. Bomeg will call upon you before we call on somebody else for a second time, and I did see you next. Wait for the microphone, please, Anna. Thank you.
Did we vote for what, the 600 or whatever that was suggested?
We have not.
We did not vote yet.
We have not voted on the amendment as yet.
All right, thanks.
All right, back of the room, Ms. Freeman.
Call the question.
Moved and seconded, we cease debate on the amendment. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, your ayes have it, and we've ceased debate. The amendment, as proposed, would change the numbers in the article to read, "The cost of gra-" of graves at the cemeteries at $300 plus the cost of the corner markers for residents and $600 plus the cost of the corner markers for non-residents." All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nays appear to have it, the nays have it, you have defeated the amendment. We're back to the article as originally written for the discussion. Seeing none, the article as originally written is to set the cost of graves at cemeteries at $150 plus the cost of corner markers for residents and $300 plus the cost of corner markers for non-residents. All those in favor of Article 23, Mr. Gant, I'll recognize you one more time.
Now that the amendment has passed, I just have a question. What can those funds be used for in the trust?
The cemetery committee is further-
And how much money is in the fund?
The cemetery committee is further interrogated. Probably the treasurer will come up with this, too. Mary Lynn? Or, yeah, we'll go with you first.
We can use those, the monies in there for maintenance, like I said, for tree pruning, for various things like that at the cemeteries, but if we only pull like $98 in interest out of one fund, that's all work we can do, is $98, without getting some additional funds elsewhere.
So, wouldn't the repair on the headstones be counted as maintenance on the yard?
No.
All right. Any further discussion on the article? Seeing none, again, the article is to set the cost of graves at cemeteries at $150 plus the cost of corner markers for residents and $300 plus the cost of corner markers for non-residents. All those in favor of approving Article 23, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, you pass Article 23. Three more to go, Article 24. The fourth one would be non-binding other business. The article to choose a committee to disperse the income of the Marsh Fund. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Harris.
I move to nominate James Brown and Barbara Mosley to serve as the committee to disperse the income of the Marsh Fund.
Is there a second? Move, we nominate James Brown and Barbara Mosley to serve as the committee to disperse the income of the Marsh Fund. Discussion on the motion. And we see none. All those in favor of the motion as red, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, you pass Article 24. Article 25 reads as follows. Shall the voters authorize payment of real and personal property taxes to the town treasurer in three installments, the due dates being September 8th of 2016, January 12th, 2017, and May 4th of 2017? Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Harris.
I move to authorize payment of real and personal property taxes to the town treasurer in three installments, the due dates being September 8th, 2016, January 12th, 2017, and May 4th, 2017.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded, do authorize payment of real and personal property taxes to the town treasurer in three installments, the due dates being September 8th of 2016, January 12th, 2017, and May 4th of 2017. Discussion on the motion. Do you wish to speak to your motion, first of all?
No, I think it's fairly clear.
All right, Mrs. Vrgoby.
We brought this up this year to change the installments from two installments to three installments, with the logic being that, you know, we know that our taxes are going to continue to rise. It's just basic economics, with or without VY closing. And so, for the families who, you know, perhaps don't escrow, we thought that it might help spread out the cost. Instead of doing two large payments, you know, it would become three smaller payments to just help with those who might, you know, might be on a fixed income or whatever. It was just kind of spread it out a little bit. And these were dates that worked for the treasurer's office, so that, you know, we would maybe not have to, we couldn't do like four payments because then we'd have to borrow or, you know, so these, this payment schedule still worked for the treasurer's office, and we just thought it might help the taxpayers as well.
Further discussion on the article. Seeing none, the motion is that the town authorize payment of real and personal property taxes to the town treasurer in three installments, with the due dates being September 8th, 2016, January 12th, 2017, and May 4th, 2017. All those in favor of the article as red, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, you pass Article 25. Article 26, shall the voters approve the provision of notice of availability of the town report and auditor's report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least 30 days prior to town meeting, in lieu of mailing or otherwise distributing the town report to the voters pursuant to 24 VSA Section 1682. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Harris.
I move to approve the provision of notice of availability of the town report and auditor's report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least 30 days prior to town meeting, in lieu of mailing or otherwise distributing the town report to the voters pursuant to 24 VSA Section 1682.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded, to approve the provision of notice of the availability of the town report and auditor's report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least 30 days prior to town meeting, in lieu of mailing or otherwise distributing the town report to the voters pursuant to 24 VSA Section 1682. Mrs. Harris, do you wish to speak to your motion?
This will save you some money, because a lot of the town reports that are mailed out end up in the recycle bin, and this way, they would be available. If you wanted, you could pick them up. If you wanted it mailed to you, you could still call and have one mailed, but it's really to save money.
Discussion on the motion, Mrs. Brow. Well, no, no, Mrs. Brow, not, Mrs. Mosley, you're next.
Hi, Brandy Brow. We have some shut-ins in the town, and they're not going to be able to get to the town clerk's office to pick up a report, but everybody has the right to look at the town report and review it. This town report, we have had some political issues within the report, had to be reprinted. That is a savings that we could have had if it was printed right to begin with. It costs under $300 to mail the report. I think it's just a basic right that the town people can have it mailed to them. We've voted on a lot of larger expensive items. I don't think that we should stop getting the report mailed directly to us and force us to have to manually come in and pick one up.
Chair would recognize Mrs. Mosley.
I noticed in the reformer of 3-1s this year that there's an article about annual reports and this very problem, and I'm trying to find out, I keep seeing references to the league, but anyway, I'll read you this one paragraph. It says, "Communities once mandated to deliver copies," to quote, "all voters or residents, now have only to provide them to registered voters and not second-hand homeowners or others. In addition, annual town meeting warnings must be posted on a municipal, municipality's website, allowing people to access them on iPhones and iPads, and we have no website." So, how does, how does that get answered?
The select board is either queried or anyone else in the room that would care to answer that question. Mrs. Harris.
If you have a town website, it would have to be put on there. If you don't have one, it does not have to be, so that's how that would work.
Further discussion on the motion, Mr. Slayson. And of course, as town attorney, you're not a town resident, but without objection, we'll allow you to speak.
Appreciate that, thank you. I just also wanted to provide some clarification. The statute referred to, 24 VSA 1682, has an express provision that the town must provide a town report to anybody who requests it, either by phone or by mail, so that in terms of the concerns expressed earlier, shut-ins will still be able to have town reports mailed to them. It just provides an opportunity for the town to distribute or provide notice of the availability, but anybody who still requests a town report may obtain one.
Chair would recognize Mrs. Vrgoby.
I'm not entirely sure what the total cost of printing and mailing the town report was, and I don't know if Cindy has the figures yet, because I don't know if she's received the invoices yet. Carol's got her hand up, so she might be able to answer that. But I also wanted to point out, reinforcing what Attorney Slayson said, was that anybody who requests to have the town report mailed to them certainly can. For me personally, my thought was, you know, we live in a very electronic age, and there are a lot of people who would love to receive the town report electronically. And like I know this year, Martin and Brana had put on the unofficial town website the, you know, a PDF copy of the town report. For those who would rather see it on their tablet or on their phone, it saves the town the cost of printing that and then mailing it as well. So, it's not to say that the town reports can't be mailed or that they wouldn't be mailed, it would just be upon request. It'd be a lot cheaper for the town if, you know, if I want to have it emailed to me, instead of having it printed and mailed to my house, I can call up Mr. Arsenault, our new town clerk, and say, "Can I have the town report emailed to me? Here's my email address. Now I've got the town report. I can pull it up on my phone whenever I want to." It's just that, right now, I believe because in the past, the town had voted to require that it be mailed to all households, that's why we have to bring it here to undo that. It doesn't mean that we won't mail it to your household, but that article that was voted on the past requires us to now. And so, this is just reversing that so that we have other options, other delivery options. But I would like to follow up with Carol and see if she has figures on what it costs to print and mail, perhaps just the one town report, the original town report.
The chair would recognize Mrs. Hammond.
The cost for mailing was, as was said, was around $325. The cost for the printing for 1,000 books was just about $1,100, and the labor, around $1,600 for putting it together. And I had two people who volunteered to help me on a couple of aspects of it. Brana helped do the, she did proofreading for me. So, I don't know what it costs to do the reprint of the codicil, but for the book itself, and that included the 50-page outside auditor's report as well.
Further discussion on the article, Mr. Gant.
Call the question.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, we cease debate. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, you've ceased debate. Again, the motion is to approve the provision of notice of availability of the town report and auditor's report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least 30 days prior to town meeting, in lieu of mailing or otherwise distributing the town report to the voters pursuant to 24 VSA Section 1682. All those in favor of passing the article, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, you pass Article 26. Article 27, other any, other any non-binding business to come before this body? And we also have a couple of different things. Firstly, an announcement, Roden Volunteer Fire Department is having a corned beef and cabbage dinner March 19th, by donation. Signs will be posted at the fire department, 4:00 to 7:00 that day. Chair would recognize Mrs. Sterapinski.
I would like for us to give a hand to Carol Hammond. She did an extraordinary job in a short amount of time to get the town report out to us.
Chair would recognize Mr. Gant and then Chairman Howe.
In lieu of some of the discussions last night regarding the library, I'd like to make a motion to put the library trustees under a board for management, either the select board or a board voted upon by the residents.
You remember that under other business, this is only a non-binding thing, so you can't call for a non-binding, you can't call for a binding article, but you can make it non-binding and suggest.
I would like to suggest.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Moved and seconded that, as a non-binding article, it suggested that the library board would be placed under some other entity, select board or others. Discussion on the motion, Brana.
We are covered by the law of the state of Vermont, separate statute, so we are elected by the town. We are already under the town. We and the select board are elected by the town. We cannot be done. We cannot go under the select board. It's, I think it's 18 or 24. Anybody know for sure? But anyhow, check your statutes.
Any further discussion? Mr. Rosensky.
Don Rosensky, I want to just suggest that there's some investigative work on the cemetery situation. If there's some way around, if there's some kind of legal mumbo jumbo we have to do, or if it's just something that's not totally understood, because that's, we're missing the boat on that one, I'm afraid. And I'd like to, at this time, thank all the select board. You guys do a heck of a job, and there's no thank you from it.
Chair would recognize Mrs. Howe.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to thank Jeff Dunkley for stepping up and stepping in when we needed him most. He's done a hell of a jo, a heck of a job, and we, I'm sorry, Emily, and we appreciate you, and would like to, I can't walk way over there, but I'd like to present you with a card and a little gift certificate for you and your wife to enjoy it here. I'd also like to introduce our new board member, Stephen Skibinowski. And welcome back to board members, Sandy Harris and Josh Unruh. Thank you all, and have a great night.
Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Those opposed, nay. We are out of here. Good night, everybody.